Papen, coming in the door, perfect timing, Councilwoman, welcome. We will just give the Councilwoman a moment to sit down and catch her breath. And Vice Mayor Maurice Goodman is calling in from a remote location. Eduardo Listos. How are you doing, Councilwoman? Very good. All right. Good afternoon and welcome to the City of Millbrae's regular council meeting for July 25, 2023. As I stated earlier, we'll do that during roll call. City Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Papen.
Here.
Councilwoman Cahalan.
Here.
Councilmember Fung.
Here.
Vice Mayor Goodman will join us shortly. Mayor Snyder.
Present.
Four members of the City Council are present.
Thank you. And if everyone who can, please join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. If you cannot, that's okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And just before we go into our proclamations and presentations, this is our last council meeting until September, so we've got quite a few agenda items tonight. It is going to be a long night, so for public comment, I am going to be limiting it to two minutes on that for any public comment items. My other opening comment is that the city has been working with the county executive Mike Calagie to set up a town hall meeting. And the first available date that County Exec Calagie had for the La Quinta Hotel issue is August 18th. The city manager will go into more detail on that. I just wanted to let you know that we are working on that town hall. I have received probably 20, 30 emails, which I have not been able to get back to people asking for that. We were working on it anyway. With that, I would like to go into proclamations, and if we could pull up the Labor Day proclamation. City Clerk, do we want to go over the portion about the Vice Mayor in a remote? Do you want to do that?
Mayor'd recommend when he logs in, we can go through that process.
We'll go back to the comments. Okay. And Mr. Leach, you are accepting tonight. Thank you for being here.
Whereas Labor Day is observed annually on the first Monday in September to honor and recognize the vital contributions of the labor movement and the men and women whose work has built our state, our nation. And whereas workers have worked tirelessly to organize rallies and strikes to advocate for labor reform, Labor Day was made to demonstrate the contributions of the working class towards America's economic prosperity and industrial strength. And whereas, over the years, the labor movement has won many battles, such as establishing a 40-hour work week, eliminating child labor, and securing health and safety precautions for workers. And whereas, the Protecting the Right to Organize, or PRO, Act, was established to empower workers to exercise their freedom to organize and negotiate for better wages and working conditions. These changes have increased worker protections and strengthens the institutions that hold corporations accountable. And whereas Labor Day is a creation of the labor movement and is dedicated to the social and economic achievement of American workers, we not only celebrate and thank workers, but we strive to keep improving working conditions and opportunities. Now, therefore, we, the members of the Millbrae City Council, do hereby proclaim September 4, 2023, as Labor Day. And we have our representative from Teamsters 856, and while he's walking to the podium, I'm going to tell you a story. My grandfather came to this country having been a soccer player, actually, but then recruited by Universal Studios. And he walked and managed the picket lines in the '30s, which were very violent. And the union there, they eventually won that and created rights for the people that are part of the strike going on in Hollywood right now. So my hearts and thoughts are out with the screenwriters and with the actors. It comes from my family, and the union fed my family. And my grandmother would tell a story. She came from Scotland, and they gave her grits, and she had no idea how to cook that, but she was grateful for the food. So good luck to the striking workers. Mr. Leach.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. It's been a while since I stood at this podium. I am Mark Leach. I'm the representative from Teamsters 856. We represent many of the workers here in the City of Millbrae that work for the City of Millbrae. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that nationwide, we have a group of workers that work for UPS. There are 340,000 members of that particular local, and they have reached a tentative agreement. So we'll see if that gets voted through, and maybe we'll have good news for the rest of the country. We won't have another supply chain interruption. Here, I represent the workers that work for this city, and very proud to do so. But I want to also mention that we have many unionized workers in this city, including our folks from law enforcement, the fire department, and down over at the BART station, building out what is sure to be an economic engine for this town for years to come. Unions have always supported workers. We do it on their behalf, whether they're in our locals or not. And I thank you for this proclamation.
Thank you. And Mayor? Go ahead. Oh, please, just Papen.
Thank you, Mr. Leach, and thank you to all our supportive employees. And having been a union member for 25 years, I really appreciate all the work and the actual quality that we get from our service workers is top-notch. So thank you very, very much for everybody who works for the city and your representation here. Thank you very much.
Mr. Leach, would you like a photograph? Let's do a photograph, guys. And next up is, Councilwoman Cahalan is going to read the proclamation proclaiming September 11 as Patriot Day and National Day of Service and Remembrance. Councilwoman. And accepting will be Chief Allen.
Whereas on September 11, 2001, nearly 3,000 innocent men, women, and children lost their lives in New York City, Washington, D.C., and Shanksville, Pennsylvania, in a terrorist attack. And whereas each year on this date, we remember the horror and bravery shown that day, just as we remember how we came together, united in grief and in purpose. And whereas, the terror and loss inflicted on our nation showed what we as people, as Americans, are truly made of, demonstrated by the people who came to the aid of all those in need. And whereas, we honor the first responders, firefighters, law enforcement officers, emergency workers, and service members, who answered the call of duty, and the brave civilians who rushed into action to save lives that day. And whereas, we must stand by one another and carry forward the legacy of strength and sacrifice. By uniting and uplifting one another, we can build a stronger, more resilient community. And whereas, we will never forget the tragedy and sacrifices of this day and will always pay tribute to our first responders and civilians for their heroic actions. Now, therefore, we, the members of the Millbrae City Council, do hereby proclaim September 11, 2023, as Patriot Day and National Day of Service and Remembrance.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And my apologies, accepting is Aiman Allen, our Millbrae Bureau Chief, and Ken Giacoto, Central County Fire Department Fire Chief. Please join us. Or we will have Ken.
I would just like to thank the City Council and the City of Millbrae for recognizing first responders and this important day. As we know, September 11 left on all of our memories. Personally, I was on the East Coast when that happened. I was in Philadelphia in college, so halfway between DC and New York. So, you know, we all remember it like yesterday. But a great and a terrible day. In the same time, we can never forget the sacrifices that our first responders made that day, as well as the 3,000 or so civilians in the towers. And I just want to say thank you for remembering them and thank you for dedicating this day. So with that, I'd like to ask my fellow members of the Millbrae Police Bureau to join me for a photo and taking the proclamation. So, thank you.
And Mayor, while you're taking the photo, just for the benefit of the public, the reason why we're doing it now is the council's recess in August. The council doesn't return until after September 4, so that's why we're doing it during this meeting. We will be planning an event, Mayor, for that day.
So as the city manager said, the reason we're doing both Labor Day and 9/11 Remembrance is our next city council meeting is September 12, which would be after both those dates. Typically and historically, Millbrae has done a special event for 9/11. The public is welcome to attend. Last year, or 2021, we sadly celebrated the 20th anniversary. And we met at 6 o'clock in the morning, 6:04, I think, was the time. But the public is welcome to attend as we honor our fallen and our current first responders. Thank you. Now, the next one, we actually have everyone here, and it is just absolutely fabulous to celebrate this amazing Millbrae volunteer. Whereas, it is with great honor and appreciation that we acknowledge the extraordinary dedication and selfless service of Ann Kirkbride, who has devoted an astounding 44 years of her life to the Millbrae community as a Community Enhancement Advisory Committee member and probably a founding member of the beautification way, way back. Although she's only 25 years old, how she did that, but there we go. Whereas throughout four decades, Ann Kirkbride has consistently demonstrated unwavering commitment and passion in spreading awareness to preserve and enhance the beauty of our community. And whereas, Ann Kirkbride is the longest-serving member of any commission and committee in Millbrae history, first being appointed in 1979 and in addition, serving over 44 years. And whereas, Ann Kirkbride's vast knowledge of Millbrae's history has been a tremendous asset in bringing forth the creative ideas of bettering our community and our environment. And whereas, over the decades, Ann has amassed a scrapbook of work projects and accomplishments where all the completed work of the Community Enhancement Advisory Committee can be viewed at the Millbrae Historical Society for all current and future residents to see. And whereas, Ann Kirkbride's ability to dedicate her time to the committee truly inspires those around her, encouraging others to get involved and contribute to the betterment of our community. And whereas, Ann Kirkbride's remarkable volunteerism and dedication to the Millbrae community is a testimony to an exceptional individual who has paved the way to make Millbrae a wonderful place to serve and reside. Now, therefore, we, the members of the Millbrae City Council, do hereby commend and honor Ann Kirkbride on her outstanding contributions to the City of Millbrae and extend our best wishes. So if you could all please join me. Thank you. And if you, would you, I think you have a few words? Testing?
City Clerk?
I think, Councilwoman, if we don't mind, we can get her on camera over there for posterity. And if you don't mind, just a few more steps for the city. Of course, the podium hides everybody.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of City Council, city staff, and the City of Millbrae for this very great honor. It has been a real privilege to work with the commission over these years. I have met wonderful people. Many, many years ago, Mary Griffin, Art Lepore, they were on the council, asked me to start a city album. We were doing a lot of city cleanup. They wanted some kind of a record. It turned out to be a fun job over the years. Thank you for your thoughtfulness, your kindness, for my gift, and I am deeply touched by this honor. This is my city.
Community Enhancement Chair Jean Wong and Vice Chair Carol Kraselnikoff. And Santana could join us. I don't have your last name in front of me. Let's get everybody up here. Ann has stepped down from the committee, but her love, her most popular topic is trees. So trees will be coming back in the fall on that. All right, next up, and I am just really happy that the state of California reached out to me, maybe reached out to all mayors with the new program. Next up, we have Becky Monroe. She's joining us virtually. She's from the California Civil Rights Department, the Deputy Director for Strategic Initiatives and External Affairs, formerly called the Department of Fair Employment and Housing. And do we have Ms. Monroe on here? Ms. Monroe, please, thank you for joining us, and you have a presentation. Please go ahead.
Yes, thank you so much, Mayor. And I really want to thank you for reaching out and responding when we reached out about these services. I have to say at the outset, it is a tough act to follow Ms. Kirkbride. But in many ways, I think the commitment that she demonstrates to the city is exactly what we're talking about when we think about how we want to combat hate in our cities. I think it's really about sort of coming together across different communities. So it's the perfect person to follow. So with that, I think I will get started here. And I think if someone can move, I'm not sure if I'm able to move. Oh, thank you. And I will be brief. I heard the mayor speak to the fact that you have a lot on your agenda today. So I wanted to share some really exciting resources that we can offer to the people of Millbrae and to anyone who you may know in the state of California. But I also, this is not the last time I can talk to you. We welcome people reaching out to get additional information. So while I will keep this relatively brief, I will make sure you have information about how to access this information going forward. So go forward here. And, you know, I wanted to make sure people knew about our mission. As the mayor mentioned, the Civil Rights Department is California Civil Rights Agency. So we handle civil civil rights enforcement. We used to be known as the Department of Fair Employment and Housing. We protect civil civil rights, which means we protect people from unlawful discrimination in employment, housing, public accommodations, as well as from hate violence and human trafficking. So if we look at the next slide, today, what I really wanted to do was just to share this great and exciting new resource we have for Californians. It is something we're really proud of. It is the first statewide resource line and network to help people targeted for hate. It was crafted in close coordination with local advocates and leaders. And so I want to kind of give information about how to access this resource. And perhaps, just as importantly, give information about how to tell us how we could improve the resource going forward. So my next slide just gives you a better understanding, and if you, kind of moving forward, that the Civil Rights Department, we have a very comprehensive approach to combating hate. We all have seen the dramatic and terrible increase in acts of hate that are being reported. And yet, we know this does not happen in a vacuum. It means we must think about how we protect civil rights across the board. So the next slide, I just wanted to share a little bit of information. These are all the laws that we enforce, and including, and you'll see at the end, the Ralph Act, which is civil claims for hate, violence, and threats. I'm going to talk a little bit in the next slide about what that looks like in terms of our enforcement. It means that people can file claims with us, if they have attorneys or not, if they are targeted for hate. But it also means that we approach this work not only from enforcement, not only through lawsuits. The work of our department is based in many different ways. So one is the California Commission on the State of Hate. This is a newer commission that was recently established. That commission will develop a comprehensive and rigorous accounting of hate activity. Many of you know that we have just had an important report from the California Attorney General about the increase in hate. But we are also hearing from people across the state and indeed, across the country, that the data that's reported to law enforcement only represents a fraction of hate. So we need to think about how do we get a more accurate picture of that. We are hosting community forums. There will be a never community forum coming up in late August from the commission. And finally, the commission will help to provide resources and guidance to communities. And that's an important piece of this work as well. The next slide, please. We also have another team that I wanted to share information with. We actually just, we've been very active across the state, but we always want people to know about this resource. Many times, we'll hear from communities that they have concerns that they cannot address the legal system, and they want to be kind of at the table as people are addressing civil rights issues. So we have this team where we can go into communities that are experiencing tension associated with allegations of discrimination. We can work with bodies like a city council. We can work with smaller civil rights leaders. We can work with community leaders. We can work with law enforcement. I will say, in my past life, I worked for the U.S. Department of Justice doing some of this work across the country and have found that we can be an effective way to bring parties to the table where there's tension and sometimes misunderstanding, and help to make sure that communities really are at the center of addressing civil rights issues. This has looked like helping to facilitate an effective public meeting, community forum, helping to make sure that people's voices are heard and that all people's voices are heard, so that there's some order and that you are able to use what you learn from these meetings to translate that into action. My next slide. This is what I really wanted to spend the most time talking about. And again, I will be brief, but you can get more information on C A V S hate.org. We have this new statewide resource line and network. We are incredibly fortunate in this state to have the kind of investment we have in combating hate. And I'm going to go to the next slide and give you a few examples of the features of this resource line. I will also say, you know, I mentioned, I've been a civil rights lawyer for about 20 years. This resource line represents so much of what I've learned from victims of acts of hate across the country. So my hope is that I'm doing justice to what I've learned from them and from victim families as well. The California versus Hate Resource Line and Network, we have three main goals. If someone reaches out because they've been targeted for hate, they can call our hotline number, and you'll see that number again. It's 833-8-no-hate. They can go online and report online. They can use their phone to go online. We want people to know what their options are if they're targeted for hate. You don't have to be a lawyer or to be a law enforcement expert to know whether you are a victim of a hate crime or a hate incident. Just know that you are targeted for discrimination, and you can reach out. We will let people know what their options are. Some people want to go to law enforcement, but want to know what that will look like. So we already have talked to many people who maybe have had some engagement with law enforcement, want to know if they do report, what will that look like? Some people actually want us to help them kind of reach out. We can do that. We can do that. Other people don't feel safe or ready yet to reach out to law enforcement. So we can connect them with other resources and support. The second piece, and this is connected to that, is to connect people with culturally competent resources and support. Many, there are many community-based organizations across the state, including in your area, that can provide support, can provide support in language if somebody speaks another language and they were targeted for hate. Sometimes it's mental health services. Sometimes it's other forms of social services. Sometimes it's legal services. Again, we will stay with that person and help them figure out what they need. If and if they share a desire to do that, we do not only say, you know, here's five resources and good luck. We say, here are five resources. If you would like, I will get on the phone with you. I will stay with you. I will make sure you're able to connect with the resources that you need. I will come back to you. We often have people who are very traumatized. They want to report, and then they say, I'm not ready to figure out what I need right now, but come back to me. And we will stay with them over time until they get the resources that they want. We're also trying to really improve data collection, as I mentioned. When I worked at the Department of Justice, I spent a little bit of time at the Domestic Policy Council as well and at the White House. And I remember how hard it was to use the data that we were getting because it, we knew it wasn't an accurate picture. So we are hoping that by making and reducing barriers to reporting, people can report anonymously, they can report with their name if they choose to, that we're helping to improve reporting. We also hope that by providing a government service that earns trust, that that lets people sort of make the decisions about what they want to share, longer term, we are earning trust for all of our colleagues across government. And again, we recognize the importance of ongoing training. So we make sure our folks have that training. The next slide. Here are the ways to access us. There's the online portal, as I mentioned. It's currently available in 15 languages online. Will be expanded to more. Eight three three eight no hate is the phone number people can use. We can, you can access services in over 200 languages in that way. No longer, you can have a wait of no longer than three minutes by contract. So and we've been able to stick to that. And the people we are using are two-on-one. Some of them are two-on-one network providers who have received special training on California versus Hate and who have a lot of expertise in understanding what are the social services people could access. Next slide. We have a relatively quick intake process. If you call, we'll have a shorter initial call. Some people just want to call and report, and that's all they want to do. Other people want longer and more follow-up through care coordination, and we offer that as well. And then with respect to online, there's also, it's more mobile friendly. There'll be a shorter sort of intake, and then we'll have a longer follow-up call if people request it. The next slide. And again, letting people know what their options are, civil or criminal legal options, if they're interested in understanding what that process would look like, and social services. And whenever possible, we are trying to connect with culturally competent community-based organizations, many of which are actually funded by our sister agency, the California Department of Social Services, which is also funding community-based organizations to provide services to people who are targeted for hate. Next slide. And and this just gives you sort of an example. We learned from a county that was doing this work really well. That's one of the reasons I love getting the opportunity to speak to city leaders is I, I always learn what we could be doing better from city leaders and also learn from their experience. So I wanted to kind of give credit to L.A. County and really to many cities and counties across the state that have told us what worked and didn't work in the past. Next slide. One of the things we think is important to note is that you can have privacy and confidentiality here. People can report anonymously. Whether or not someone reports anonymously, their identity will not be disclosed without their permission. And again, we have some exceptions if there's a report of child abuse, elder abuse, or activities indicating an imminent risk of violence. We highlight the privacy and confidentiality because when you talk to people who have been targeted for hate and have chosen not to report, one of the things they talk about is a fear of retaliation. And so we want to make it clear, this is a safe place to report in the hopes of building up that trust. Next slide. And again, we have ongoing input and accountability. We wanted to make sure that we could hold ourselves accountable. We have contracts with community-based organizations who are very quick to tell us when we've got it wrong. Those contracts are for technical assistance. So they help us to figure out how to more effectively reach the communities that have been targeted for hate. Many times, they have earned the trust that we don't have, and so they are able to share those perspectives with us directly. We have a lot of feedback sessions, a lot multilingual outreach and education campaigns. You've seen some of those in this presentation so far. And we're really building out this network, trying to make sure we are building a network of community-based organizations that can help to support others in the, in our state. And the next slide. I also wanted to share for anyone in the city, we are happy to make, you know, sort of bespoke materials that speak specifically to Millbrae's commitment to combating hate, to get the word out. If you are working with a church or mosque, a synagogue, if you are with a local community center, if you are with any kind of organization, we are happy to help work. And we've got some that are available for free already, where you can customize them to get the word out, to make sure people know that this is a resource that was created for them and is available to them. So again, you can find it at this C A versus hate.org. And the next slide here. So, you know, this was by the bulk of my presentation. And I know, I'm sorry I couldn't be with you in person, but I did really want to thank you for inviting me, for bringing me into this conversation with you all and to note that, you know, whenever I come and talk about this, people often say, sort of a depressing topic. It absolutely is. Hate devastates people. But what is incredibly inspiring is that when you have a community, like it looks like Millbrae has, where you have people that are dedicated to, whether it's volunteerism or to working with each other to build each other up and to support each other, we have the ability to push back on this growth in hate. We have the ability to connect people with real resources and support. And so for that reason, I am quite hopeful and I am really grateful to you all for the opportunity to join you today. And I again encourage you, if you need any other additional information, to please, to please let me know. And thank you again, Mayor, and to the City Council for allowing me to join you today.
Thank you, Deputy Director. And just to reiterate what she said when she first approached me, it's a resource for people who are dealing with trauma and that it's a safe place to go. And that is just really good news. Councilwoman Pappan's going to come up, and then I do, I will talk about a commission we're forming. So the timing couldn't be more perfect on that. Councilwoman Pappan.
Thank you very much, Director Monroe. This is wonderful news, and I am hoping the city can actually get this information on our website. We have a very, we proudly have a very diverse community. And there has been way too many incidents that none of us want to see. So this is a great resource. We appreciate all your time and effort in the state of California for actually establishing something like this. So we look forward to working with you, and hopefully, we can get the message out to our community that it is so important to report any incidents like this. Nothing is acceptable when it comes to hate. So we look forward to working with you, and the mayor will explain our committee that we're setting up. Thank you very much. Nice to have you here.
Thank you, Councilwoman. So, and she led right into that. So we are in the process of, we've just approved a contract with a consultant who's going to help reach out to the community on a diverse things to help create our very first social equity commission on that. So your timing is perfect. You, and I'm glad the councilwoman mentioned our website. We are currently doing a complete revamp of our website. And if offline, we can make sure that the right people and in your team are talking to our team, that we get the right information up on the website. And then we also have an incredible public information team, one of whom just had a baby, yay, on that. But you mentioned that you're going to have some workshops later in August. If you can make sure that information can get to the city clerk, we can get that out to the community on that. So I think this is very exciting, and it's great to have those additional resources, things that we do not have as a small city. So grateful for the state for doing this.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. And I guess I will just end in saying that I'm heartened by this support for this work and that, you know, hate unfortunately is not new, but neither is coming together to combat it. And so I'm really heartened to hear about the new initiatives you have and look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Be safe. Okay. Next up is the San Mateo Sheriff's, Millbrae Police Bureau Office update. And we have with us Ayman Allen, who is Millbrae Bureau Chief and Captain in the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office. Please join us. And to us, chief, or to me, chief, chief or captain.
I answer to both. Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for the opportunity to present, Mayor, City Council, and Mr. City Manager. The purpose of this is just an update on where we are as a city, specific trends and some statistics for the city's edification as far as where we're at and steps we're taking to address issues within the city from a law enforcement standpoint. If I could have the next slide, Eduardo. I'm going to talk a little bit about our data and some trends we're seeing, as well as strategies and solutions that we have in office and the Millbrae Police Bureau are taking to combat those, those issues, as well as some success stories we're having. We're fortunate to have flock cameras in town, and we're seeing some tremendous success stories there. So I'd like to highlight those and some of the incredible work that our deputies are doing. And then next steps moving forward. So next slide, please, Eduardo. Just a little bit of background. The three biggest issues that we face as a city here are related to narcotics offenses, shoplifting, and homelessness at this time. So a little bit of background. Prop 47 went into effect in 2014, and it reduced the penalties for a great deal of what are considered lower-level drug offenses, lower-level property crimes. So where we used to have narcotics-related offenses that were felonies, and people would go to jail, now they receive, for the most part, citations. And it's similar as well with lower-level property crimes, including shoplifting. This created a new penal code section for shoplifting. And the threshold for taking somebody to jail for this is $950, which, as you can imagine, is a significant amount of property from Walgreens, Safeway, et cetera. Next slide, please. In conjunction with Prop 57, which went into effect in 2018, along with AB 109, these were enacted to combat prison overcrowding. A great deal of prison offenders were released early, given credits, and either released or bumped down to county jails. We became responsible for a great deal of inmates that formerly would have been in state prison and now are in county jail. As you can imagine, the jails didn't get any bigger. So what that forced us to do was release lower-level offenders in the street. So we're seeing a great deal of those formerly lower-level offenders on the street now and continuing to cause issues. So next slide, please. Shoplifting is an issue here. We receive calls on a daily basis. We are one of the few crimes we're seeing in Millbrae that are actually ticking up. And I'll talk about some steps we're doing to address that later. But we are on pace to see approximately a 62% increase from 2022. I'll touch on the next slide, but this data is compiled year-to-date for 2023. So we took the entire 2022 year, and then we're going to extrapolate the data from 2023 year-to-date. And this is about through the end of June. So we're about halfway through as far as the date is concerned. As far as strategy to combat shoplifting, we're addressing the main source of some of these offenders, which we believe is the transit corridor here, specifically BART and Caltrain. And I'll talk a little bit about that in a bit, as well as some of the opportunities we're using grant funding to address this issue. Next slide, please. As I mentioned, the data suggests that crime in Millbrae overall is down. We're fortunate, knock on wood, we don't have homicides here, and we're going to keep it that way. Sexual assault, as you can see, is right about as it's been. We're on pace for about 10, which is 10 too many, but is about on par with a normal year. Robbery is down. That's the use of fear or force in the commission of theft. For those that conflate robbery and burglary, they're different things. That robbery is down. As you can see, we're on pace for about 12, which would be down from last year. Aggravated assault is way down. We have seven year-to-date as opposed to 34 we had last year. Commercial burglary is down. We have 13 year-to-date as opposed to 41 last year. This also takes into account a little bit of a spike, which we'll see month to month in a, in a slide to come. That's related to thefts from lockers at 24 Hour Fitness. We've had four of those recently, and that is the spike in commercial burglary. That's considered a commercial burglary. Residential burglary, like I said, 14 is 14 too many, but we are down. I've been the victim myself of residential burglary. I know what an invasion it is. So I, by no means do I wish to minimize that crime. But we are down, and that's as a result, we think of increased patrols in the hills where we traditionally see residential burglaries based on the 280 corridor. Vehicle burglary, as you can see, we had a pretty significant year for vehicle burglaries in 2022, based on our numbers to date and our increased patrol, as well as the flock cameras identifying suspects' vehicles. This is a regional issue. We do see vehicles from mainly San Francisco, mainly the East Bay, making loops through our county and burglarizing vehicles. I'll touch on a success story that we had. We have 60 year-to-date, and approximately 28 of those were in one day by a single group that was arrested. So again, would have been nice to catch them beforehand, but they were ultimately arrested and booked into custody. As I mentioned, shoplifting is up. We're on pace for about a 62% increase. Vehicle theft is about where we saw it last year. We have taken steps to address that, including recruiting the use of our vehicle theft task force, which is an asset that the sheriff's office has. It's a sergeant and three deputies. One of the things we're using at the moment is a bait car in town, which is a vehicle that's specifically designed by our experts to get stolen. Unfortunately, hasn't gotten stolen yet, but, you know, can't do much about that. But we are taking some pretty significant steps and addressing this issue here. And fortunately, as we'll see in a, in a slide to come, that has been down recently. So arson, we're a little bit up. We believe that's related to homeless issues and transients coming off our public transportation. Vandalism is a little bit flat. And domestic violence, again, 11 domestic violence cases is 11 too many, but it is down. Next slide, please. As I mentioned, residential burglary is down overall. We had a brief spike in March, but based on our high-visibility patrols in the hills, we are trending downward for the most part. Next slide. Again, that commercial burglary spike is due to thefts from 24 Hour Fitness, lockers broken into, personal items stolen. Next slide. In March, as I mentioned, we had the one spike related to a certain group of individuals. They were located, they actually fled onto Green Hills Country Club Golf Course, and our deputies were able to apprehend them on the golf course. So something right out of a cops TV show. But we were ultimately able to apprehend them. They were young suspects, 18, 19, and 13, out of San Francisco. Next slide, please. Vehicle theft, we had a brief spike, as I said, in May, which prompted us to take some extraordinary steps with our vehicle theft task force. As you can see, in June, that is down. So while we don't know specifically that that's as a result of some of our steps, it is a positive note. Next slide, please. The first part of this year, shoplifting was way up. Again, we averaged about 16 per month. We have taken some steps to, for lack of a better term, draw the line in the sand at Caltrain and BART. And we believe that that is having a positive effect on some of the offenders coming into Millbrae to commit these shoplifting offenses. There's a slide related to this later, but there is a great deal that what happens in the counties around us affects us, unfortunately. And a great deal of these folks come from San Francisco on public transportation. They return to San Francisco on public transportation to peddle their wares that they have shoplifted. And then they use that money to purchase narcotics and then to kind of... And then they use that money to purchase narcotics and then it's kind of a repeat cycle. So that's what we're seeing. But we are taking some positive steps and shoplifting is down over the last couple of months. Next slide. Vandalism, we had a brief spike in April and May, but that appears to be trending downward now. Next, please. As I mentioned, narcotics is an issue in the city. I will say, we're not unique in that respect. California, for lack of a better term, has pretty permissive narcotics laws. It is also a great deal of outside Milbrae influence that we're seeing. Of the 176 narcotics-related arrests that we made in the first half of this year, only six of those offenders were actually Milbrae residents. 27, as you can see, were from, 27%, excuse me, from San Francisco, 25 from various East Bay locations, and then 21% from elsewhere within San Mateo County. As I mentioned, formerly, we would take people to jail for narcotics-related offenses and now they receive a citation for the most part. Next slide, please. As I mentioned, the policies of counties around us affect us. A lot of the residential burglaries, as well as vehicle burglaries, are from out-of-town offenders who work the Bay Area in a circular fashion generally. They start either in the East Bay and go counterclockwise or clockwise, but that's where the most, the bulk of our offenders are from. And then I mentioned the goods, the resale of stolen goods. Next slide, please. There are some good news, there are some good news, though. As I mentioned earlier, we have flock cameras throughout the city. And strategically located, we don't give away the locations because, as you can imagine, that's not information we want to share with the folks who are, just in case they're tuned in to our Milbrae City Council meeting tonight, to get some intelligence. But as I mentioned, in March of 2023, we had a flock hit and our deputies were able to locate three suspects fleeing from a vehicle. They fled onto the Country Club Golf Course. And as I mentioned, they were responsible for not only vehicle burglaries, but other window smashes where nothing was taken. So frustrating day for the city, for us and the Milbrae Police Bureau, but ultimately, they were taken into custody, which is a good end, if there can be a good end for them. In June of this year, we had a case in the Safeway parking lot where two gentlemen were supposed to meet up for a Facebook Marketplace transaction regarding a cell phone. The person who was due to buy the phone produced a gun and robbed the individual of the cell phone and fled in a vehicle. But thanks to Flock, within an hour, we were able to identify his vehicle as well as the person of interest, who later turned into a suspect and was arrested the next day. That individual, as well as his partner, were responsible for approximately eight to 10 similar offenses throughout the Bay Area. So thanks to Flock, we were able to solve that case here in Milbrae and get that person in custody. On June 27th of this year, just a few weeks ago, we got alerted, our deputies were alerted by Flock, that a felony vehicle had come into town and it was related to homicide in Lodi, as well as the driver, who was the homicide suspect. And utilizing Flock, we were able to vector in, locate this individual and the vehicle, and take him into custody. So that was a good win. While it wasn't a Milbrae case, thank goodness, it was very impressive work for our deputies and really gave a good, enhanced the reputation of our Milbrae Police Bureau throughout the Bay Area and the region in their ability to get this person in custody. And then, just on a personal note, as recently as today, we had another flock hit with a stolen vehicle, 280 in Larkspur, and our deputies were able to locate the vehicle. The driver fled, ended up going into Mills Peninsula Hospital and we were able to take him into custody with nobody hurt and another felon in custody. So our folks are doing some great work and having Flock really enhances their ability to keep this town safe. So, thank you. Next slide, please. So next steps, we're fortunate to have a deputy specifically assigned to the downtown region, a walking footbeat. So we're going to continue to maintain visibility and engagement downtown. As I mentioned earlier, we've really drawn a line in the sand at Caltrain and BART. So we are now upon my orders doing passing checks at that transit station, which basically means that the deputies, anywhere from five to 10 times a day, are going to the station, getting out on foot, being visible, contacting people there. And that's resulted in approximately 40 arrests in the last two weeks. So we're making some, what I would imagine, or what I believe to be significant headway in where we believe a lot of these offenders are coming from, and we'll continue to do that. As I mentioned before, using Sheriff's Office resources like vehicle theft, we're very fortunate, being a larger agency, to bring, to bear a tremendous amount of resources when we have issues here. So that is certainly a positive for the city. We're engaging with our community stakeholders, continuing to build relationships with businesses in town and maintaining those working relationships. And then finally, we're working with the state of California to bring grant funds related to organized retail theft into town. The state of California is currently working on, I believe it's $254 million for grant funding for organized retail theft in the state. And we're going to have a part of that, which will allow us to enhance our operations here and combat retail theft. Next. And then just real quick, if I could share one story before I take questions, of course. Just a good story from today that kind of helps me remain grounded and reminds me that we're doing great work in the city. I had the privilege of addressing the Milbrae Parks and Rec Summer Camp today. So the little kids, anywhere from six to about 10, it looked like. And I had a motor officer there, I was there in uniform, motor officer there with his bike and his boots and everything, and a SWAT officer with the big bear cat. Again, all Sheriff's Office resources we have available. And presented and then took questions from the kids. And one of the kids, a little guy sitting in the front row, probably seven or eight years old, asked me why I didn't have as much equipment as the other deputies that came with me. And I told them, "Well, you know, that's because I'm the chief and I'm in an office and, you know, I don't do the cool stuff anymore, you know, that I used to do and these guys get to do the good stuff." And he looked at me and he said, "Lame." And I would have to agree. But no, it was a privilege to talk to those guys and just a privilege to be a part of Milbrae. So, thank you. And I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Counsel? Councilman Fung?
Thank you, Chief. Thank you for being here today and thank you for being here every day in our city, keeping everybody safe. Just a comment for our public here. As you can see, the investment that we make between the flock cameras and the downtown patrol officers are paying dividend as we speak here. Able to keep everybody safe, locating those folks who either try to come into town and commit a crime or those who commit a crime outside of town and coming in, perhaps with the intent to commit more crimes. We are serious about keeping everyone safe here in Milbrae and public safety will continue and has always been our number-one priority. So thank you for all you do, Chief, and everyone in your team as well. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilman Fung. Councilwoman Pappen?
Thank you. Chief Allen, thank you very, very much. And as my colleagues stated, we do take public safety very, very seriously. I want to do, first and foremost, thank Sheriff Corpus for making those flock cameras happen when she was here. And it was quite a struggle, but it really is paying off. Glad to see you all are able to take advantage of that. We did have several break-ins, auto break-ins last week that I was told about. I'm not sure if all were reported. We do want to make sure if you are a victim of a crime like that, please report it so that we, Sheriff's Office has every opportunity there. I'm so glad to hear about your efforts at BART. I am hoping the city of Milbrae, as I have said multiple times, will sue BART for reimbursement for all of your work there because it is amazing how much comes from there. I would like to encourage the city of Milbrae here to write a letter to BART right now to speed up their faregates so that our officers have more time to work within the city. They have set aside funding to put up the faregates to avoid the faregate evasions, but they are really taking their time. And the Bay Area Council sent a letter asking for them to speed that up. I think it would benefit our city to do the same so that we can go from there. The cameras, we've had robberies at the Green Hills Country Club. Individuals have lost watches and other things. So I'm not sure what efforts are being made there. I know your deputies were several very busy today at the post office area. Not quite sure what that was about. But if we can help in any way, as far as 24-Hour Fitness goes, the retail shoplifting thing is very serious here, given the hours for Walgreens, the hours for Safeway. It's nice to hear funding. I think what would help is if at the doors of every store there, there was a QR code where somebody can report something quickly. That would be very, very helpful to people because the BART app that now has BART Watch, if something just that fast to get to you all would make, I think, the residents and the retail operators a lot more comfortable. We don't want any crimes here and you guys are doing a great job. But we, the amount of shoplifting, especially late at night at our stores, it just, it's really devastating to the community and to the businesses. So if we can help you all, if you have any ideas as to how we can stop this from happening without chaining up everything, you've seen on the news, the Walgreens that's been like chaining everything. But again, my compliments to you and your staff. Thank you very much for all your hard work and effort. We are highly supportive here, so let us know what we can do to help you as well. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for the suggestion. We'll certainly take a look at it.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Cahalan?
Yes, thank you so much for the presentation and I echo everyone's sentiments about all the hard work that you all are doing. You know, I, as I'm out in the community, I do hear from so many folks that safety really is such a big, high concern for them. And I often come back to my education hat. And I think these statistics just showing that our trends are down and we're seeing change. If there's ways through the newsletter or our website or other ways to get that information out to the community to maybe help alleviate concerns and help folks feel more safe would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, you know, Councilmember Pappen, you mentioned that they were busy at the post office. Just briefly on probably some of the workload that we have here, our folks are busy every day. Last month, if I could just share some quick stats, in May, actually, which is the last month we have statistics for collated and everything. Our deputies wrote 547 citations. Traffic is an issue here, but that's on an order of about 18 a day, every day. We took over 200 reports, which again is about, you know, seven per day. And then we made 94 arrests, so that's three per day, every day. So our folks are doing, out there doing some fantastic work. And then, real quick, Mayor, just before, I'm excited to hear your thoughts. But real quick, on the homeless, we've talked about how, I know the homeless is a contentious issue here in town and homelessness in and of itself is not a crime and we have a responsibility to help folks. But that does not mean that if you see people out of place in your neighborhood, this is for our residents, if you see people that are out of place, who you know don't belong, or you see people engaged in the commission of a crime, do not hesitate to call us because we will come and we will evaluate it and if possible, we will take them to jail. So, thank you. And then, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Councilwoman Cahalan. I attended, several of us attended the Cal Cities Conference back in April and I attended a workshop on shoplifting. And the difference between, and I'm saying this so that the public understands and that you can help educate us, they're the people that are hungry and they get something to eat. And then there are these basically organized crime rings now, organizing high-item thefts, high-turnover items. And they can even have warehouses in residential communities. So I'm really pleased to see that we're working on that grant. I know that we all want to have a very open heart and we want to feed people and that we can do more probably here in the city to make sure that we connect people that are hungry to food on that. But there's this whole other world that opened up. It's how professional the shoplifters are and how organized they are and how quickly they are in and out. And most of our retailers have a do-not-engage policy for their own employee safety, which is, completely makes sense, but it does increase the anxiety level of the community. So I look forward, definitely, when we hear more about that, let's come back. It was completely eye-opening to me that you could be in a very nice neighborhood and nobody will even know, but that house has been turned into a warehouse and there could be one room full of toothpaste and another room full of high-end shampoos and another room, you know, not the items, not all iPods or Apple computers on there. It can be these items that are quick turnover, but they can be stored in there and you wouldn't know it. You just wouldn't know it on that. So it could happen anywhere at any time. So thank you for that. Again, I just want to say thank you so much. That is a lot of activity on there and just thank you and thank all the officers. And I'm sure the people here appreciate that, too.
Thank you, Mayor.
And I don't know if you are staying up here, I believe you are. No, we have someone new.
I'm going to give somebody else a chance to speak.
Very good. Well, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
And thankfully, again, always the serious stuff and then some really exciting things. One of the best programs out of the sheriff. We have the Sheriff's Activity League's Food and Wine, Food, Wine and Hero Event. And we have Lilian Tashiro, Deputy Director of the San Mateo County Sheriff's Activity League and her team with us. Take it away.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Schneider, Vice Mayor Goodman, if on recording later, Councilmember Fung, Councilmember Cahalan, and Councilmember Gina Pappen. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. I know I'm here for a very short amount of time. My name is Lilian Tashiro. I'm the Deputy Director for the 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, the San Mateo County Sheriff's Activities League. Today, I have some wonderful supporters, because I know I didn't mention them all. I just want to make sure I draw recognition. I have Destiny Cortez, she's part of our youth program. She'll have a little bit, a quick statement to make. I also have former Vice Mayor Annie Oliva and she's also our board member, highly supportive of our activity here. I have Program Director Mason Locke, who runs and helps oversee a lot of our programs. And I have another board member, Allison Maysidge, from Franklin Templeton. All great supporters for our organization. Next slide. Oh, I'm sorry, yes. And of course, our Councilmember Andrew Fung, who's also a board member for our sheriff activities. I apologize. So real quick, our mission statement is really to invest in all youth like Destiny in our San Mateo County by creating opportunities that guide them towards their full potential through impactful programs, which foster relationships between deputies, youth, families, and communities. I'm in civilian wear, but I'm actually also a deputy, too. And this is the opportunity where I get the opportunity to build a relationship with youth and really do sense aside the uniform and see each other as human beings when we interact in uniform and out of uniform. Next slide, next slide. Our four focus areas here is, one is academic achievements. Two, it would be health and wellness. Three, mentoring and leadership. And four is building the bond between deputies, youth, and communities. Next slide. As you can see, a list there, there's just a long laundry list of different type of programs that we do. They all focus in some type of one of our focus areas. It could be the academic tutoring and homework help. It could be health and wellness, or it could be after-school sports, lunchtime sports. Or even we have a mental health where I go and talk to kids from kindergarten to first grade about feelings and how to deal with difficult feelings. We have the leadership, we have an empowering or a leadership mentoring program called the Teen Leadership for the Bayside and the Empowering Youth. I have Mason Locke, who want to talk real quickly about the mentoring and leadership programs that we have for South.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I just briefly wanted to highlight the direct work that I've been a part of for 10 years. I myself have been in the program when I was in high school, in a product of the program. And for the past 10 years, I've had the pleasure of working with the Sheriff's Office and bringing resources to the community that are vital. One of the statistics I wanted to highlight was, this past June, we gave, we have 19 seniors who graduated high school, majority of which are first-generation high school students who don't have the means or the resources. high school students who don't have the means or support from family due to being first-generation. They all graduated from high school and are all going to a four-year college, and two of those are Fulbright scholarships to Notre Dame and University of the Pacific for their involvement in our program. We provide life-changing support in terms of family crisis intervention and general support, mental health resources, and we get to incorporate deputies alongside and bring them into schools and help them be support system rather than the only, the crisis innovation or the after solution. We call it the proactive solution to law enforcement in the community. So before I go anywhere further than that, I wanted to highlight one of our program participants, Destiny Cortez.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Destiny Cortez. I've been with Sal for about over six years, I think. I'm a senior in high school, and I, as Mason mentioned, they definitely have life-changing support in all areas. I have gained support academically, I've gained support in terms of guidance and where I want to lead with my life. And most of all, I've gained, like, family support. My two younger siblings have had the privilege and honor of also being able to join in with Sal, even though for a long time they weren't able to because it was specifically for high school students. And now I have my younger brother who is able to participate as well. And I can only honestly say that it has changed our lives for the better. I have gained so much networking with Sal. And I've been able to connect with my community so much more. I've been able to meet with different people. I now have connections with each of those graduates, which I'm so thankful for, and it really wouldn't have been possible without Sal. And I can honestly say that there's, Sal is the only reason why I am able and feel confident enough in speaking in front of you all to here today. And that, that would have never been possible without the guidance of Sal and Mason, most of all. Thank you, Mason, and thank you for listening today.
And what an amazing public speaker you are.
Next slide, please. Oh, so this year, Annie Oliva recommended the Milbury Recreation Center as a venue site to host the Food, Wine, and Heroes event. This event is a fundraiser event to highlight a youth and deputy and community member of the year for their selfless and outstanding commitment to the community. We even have our new sheriff, who was previous chief of police for Milbury, and we're excited and grateful to have it at this wonderful venue spot in the city of Milbury. Next slide. We're here to seek some support and sponsorship from the city of Milbury for $10,000. The city of Milbury has had a wonderful relationship with the community, youth, and deputies. What better way to show the support in the community and our mission by helping support us in the success of this event? Next slide. By becoming a sponsor for Sal, the city of Milbury would gain valuable exposure and recognition within our community. Together, we can make a difference, a significant difference in the lives of our youth and strengthen the bond between law enforcement and the community we serve. We are all here. We all believe in the mission, and we hope we can count on you for your support. I do want to have Annie Oliva also say a few words to you.
Great job, guys. So, Council, I hope this finds you in good health and in high spirits. It's nice to be on this side of the dais, I have to say. But as a Sal board member, I'm here to formally request your support for the Sheriff's Activity League with a financial contribution of $10,000. As you guys know, our new sheriff is a well-respected former Milbury chief, and making this cause all the more significant to our community. First and foremost, I would like to emphasize the importance of supporting our sheriff's initiatives and our Sheriff's Activity League, particularly in its efforts to benefit our youth.
You did a great job. You are a perfect example of what we strive to do.
This league plays vital roles in providing our young residents with a positive opportunity for growth, development, and engagement through various activities and programs, and it fosters leadership skills, builds character, promotes teamwork, and encourages academic success. I must express my personal conviction to the value of this league and my unwavering support for our sheriff's office and this board. In the past, some of us were unjustly accused of not supporting our sheriff, which deeply saddened me as a dedicated member of our community. This upcoming opportunity to showcase our support publicly would allow me and many others of us, like me, to demonstrate just how inaccurate those accusations were. It is a chance to show our unwavering allegiance to this cause and highlight the positive impact it's had in our town. Moreover, I would like to express my pride in hosting this event in our hometown. It provides us with a unique opportunity to display the beauty of our new community senator, center to esteemed dignitaries in our, in our county. By extending our sponsorship to the Sheriff's Activity League, we showcase our commitment to excellence and the welfare of our residents. Additionally, your sponsorship, we request for a table that you sit at as our leaders and our representatives, which further demonstrates our dedication to the success of this event. In closing, Sheriff's Office and the Sheriff's Activity League eagerly await your consideration to include this matter as your consent item in your next council meeting. We believe that through your generous support, we can continue to positively influence the lives of youth and create continued positivity influenced by the lives of our youth, create opportunities for growth, and strengthen the bond between law enforcement and our community. You guys, thank you for your time, your attention, and your continued commitment to serving our community. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you, former Mayor Oliva. Before I open it up to Council, a couple of questions. What is the actual date of the event?
September 28th.
Okay. And the program will go when, the problem is-
Five to nine.
Five o'clock to nine o'clock?
No, no, oh, I'm sorry. No, when your print program, because we have no council meeting in August. So I love going on consent calendar, but that won't be till September 12th.
We, we could wait.
I appreciate that. We can, when I looked at the agenda item, I figured there was some asked there, but I, it's not necessarily on the agenda. What can we do tonight, or do we need to have a special council meeting to make the timeline they need for the event?
I'm going to look the city attorney in terms of an action item. I, I will say the authority of the city manager is $50,000, so the request is, is within the authority of the city manager. But-
Okay.
If the direction of the city council is you want it on the agenda to prioritize or, or give me direction this evening, but I'm going to look the city attorney on it.
I really can't act on it. It is within the city manager's spending authority. You could bring a matter in September to ratify or confirm that, but-
But we, that would be too late to do the program.
Right.
To be in the actual program.
He could approve the expenditure.
To have it printed, Mayor?
Correct.
We need at least 10 days in order to get it into the program.
So actually, September 12th is really close.
You're close.
So is it okay for us to express an opinion on this item? It's on the agenda, so we can provide direction to the city manager? Or is that a no-no?
You can provide direction to the city manager. I wouldn't pull the council to get a direction, though.
Okay. I am going to say before I open it up to Council that I wanted to give you a huge thank you for both the bounce house and the water, I don't know what you call those bubbles, at Juneteenth. And in the past, when Sal, both the students and the, the team have come to our movie nights with the soccer fields, it is one of my mom's favorite memories of you guys bringing the little soccer things. And the amazing thing about little ones, they don't see color, they don't see socioeconomics, they just play. And it's just so heartwarming on that. So I probably tells you where I'm going in terms of supporting this and the fact that it's here in Milbury, and it's September 27th.
Eight.
Twenty-eighth, twenty-eighth. So not conflicting with Cal Cities. Yay, on that. So, Council, anything you want to say? Councilman Pappan?
Very impressive, especially the young lady here. So the results that Sal brings to any community is, is so welcome and so greatly appreciated. And I, for one, would support all the efforts without taking a formal vote. I think we do need to support your efforts, and we welcome you to Milbury and really want to encourage all that you do here. So, again, I'm very supportive. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Cahalan.
I just, I echo the gratitude for coming and sharing tonight and seeing all the wonderful work that is happening through Sal. And thank you for coming and sharing your experience. It takes courage, and you are an excellent representative. So thank you.
I just want to take a moment and share a little bit of my personal experience with Sal. Ever since 2021, I think that's when I began working with Sal, every year I participated at the Christmas toy drive, where, thank you, Lillian.
He was our Santa.
Driving me and my family around, dressed in Santa costume, delivering baskets of books, stuffed animal gifts to children who are obviously folks who we may not necessarily see every day, because obviously they, some are more at risk, and some certainly aren't more of a socioeconomically challenged. And they've probably been, they've, they've probably been told all their lives that Santa don't come here to our neighborhood. But we proved them wrong. We bring more than gift to these children. We bring more than books and stuffed animals to these children. We bring hope to these kids. We tell them we care. People do care about you, and you're one of us, and we will never forget about you, and that you have the same opportunity as everybody else. And that's what Sal did. And that's what Sal continued to do for all of our children. I, I see the sobbing from you, Lillian. But this is why we do it. And therefore, the support that we're asking here as a group is to deliver these hopes to our children, every single one of them, as we look them in the eye and tell them, you are important, and we care. So this is what I will leave to the council to make that decision. But I cannot be more proud to be a part of you, and I cannot be more proud of us as a group because of everything that we do every day for the children who needed us the most. Thank you all.
Thank you, Councilman. I, I think, before I start crying, I, I think that's a direction. I would also say, as a Milbury Lion, and it's been a few years since I've been to one of the Sal fundraisers, but they usually have a really good silent auction. Is that happening this year?
So I'm glad you brought that up. We've been through COVID, so this will be our, this is year four that we're coming out of the dark. So all of those hopes and dreams have been a little bit diluted as well. But we're really excited to bring this to Milbury as an opening with the chief that came from Milbury and our new community center that was burnt down and came up. And we need 60 baskets for our silent auction, or plus. Should I go for it? We need 60 baskets to make our goal. And we have asked, reached out to former Mayor Wayne Lee for, to bring that to the Lions. But please, if you could help, actually, Allison and Lillian have, and I, I guess, we're trying to put this together ourselves. And we have a great goal, a huge nut to crack. So if you guys can help donate, if anybody here in our community wants to give gift certificates or come up with an idea for a basket, you don't even have to put the basket together. Lillian has her, her volunteers that are going to put the baskets together. But yes, please, we need help. We need items. We need whatever. We're going to, we're going to bring the fun. We got a beautiful community center, and we're going to have an amazing program. If you think she's great, she's the greatest, but there's about four or five more that are going to be, you know- Showed off, right? Are you going to show them off? Yeah?
We'll bring it all.
But we're really excited, and do we need help? Yes. Do we need the sponsorship for the $10,000? Yes. We need to get this show on the road. But we need anybody's help. A gift certificate, if you have a business in Milbury and you want to put it towards a basket, please, we would love that.
Very good. Well, it just so happens that we, as you know, we have the mayor's coordinating council. It's this Thursday, so city clerk, I think we've already sent the agenda out, but can you remind me to bring this up? Because that has many of the community groups there. And as the mayor, I'm happy to donate a basket.
Oh, I love it. Thank you so much.
And I might prompt the city manager as a challenge on that.
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman.
Real quick, just for the public, Councilmember Cahalan and I met with the school district today, and there are actually 700-some children that are well below the poverty line and really would benefit from these services. And two council members making people cry. I don't know, but hey.
Do you want to, do you want to mention-
Tears of happiness, I'm sure. But these programs are so needed within our city.
We have them in Milbury. Go ahead.
We do like lunchtime soccer. We do, I want to say, we do, we do outreach for our whole mentoring program. We reach out to the counties. That's why we have a coast and a bayside. So we collectively gather it for the opportunity for these type of programs. So, the more, the more funding we get, the more support and more programs that we could provide for the community.
We did have the golf before the-
So it's, it's a comeback year, and I'm so glad that it's going to be here in Milbury. I don't know if there's anything else we can add. I'm, I just, you'll send us the information when you need the baskets, assessment, all that value stuff, and we'll let you know how the mayor's coordinating council goes on Thursday.
And I'll take the mayor up on her challenge, and my basket will be bigger than her basket.
Oh, dear. Wow.
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
There we go. We got three.
I'm in there, too.
We're on our way. We got another one over here.
Fifty-six to go.
We will have that auction here. So, all good. Thank you so much. And again, it is lovely, and, you know, we enjoy having you here and being part of the Sheriff's Department and being part of this program. And it's great that we have a former council member, mayor, and a current council member on the board. And you do great work, and we're grateful. And now I'm going to go in the back room and cry.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, moving on to, oh, thank you. Moving on to agenda overview and staff briefing, city manager.
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor. And as you know, because of time, I defer the agenda review to you. But real quick, we did open the Skyline Water Tank, and we're thrilled to announce that that was a successful project on budget and on schedule. The new water tank is 1.5 million gallon of water up in the Skyline area and is a vital asset to the city's water supply, and it ensures obviously more resiliency and reliability in our system for emergency purposes for years to come. So a very significant project for our Public Works Department, Sam Batista, our, our Director of Engineering and Public Works, and everybody that had a hand in that. So just a great project for the community and our infrastructure. Also, Planning Commission recruitment are still underway, so we're currently accepting applications for planning commissioners. Planning Commission serves as the recommending and decision-making body for land use, zoning, land development, and other related manners as it's defined in the government code under state planning law. So for more information, you can contact the city clerk at 650-259-2414, or email administration@ci.milbury.ca.us. Again, administration@ci.milbury.ca.us, or just visit our website for information. And then, just quickly, we have several upcoming events. August 1st at 5:30 PM is our National Night Out at Central Park. August 11th at Sunset, right around 8:00 PM is Milbury Goes to the Movies. This is the Puss in Boots Last Wish will be showing on August 11th at Central Park. Thursday, August 17th is our Summer Concert Series, Beats, Brews &amp; Vines on Broadway. This is at the intersection of, of Broadway and Hillcrest. And then also, August 19th- This is at the intersection of Broadway and Hillcrest. And then also August 19th, Saturday, August 19th at 8:00 AM is the Millbrae Machines Car Show. And so, Mayor, that is a quick overview of what is happening in Millbrae.
Not to put you on the spot, city manager, but a brief update on the town hall on August 18th.
Oh, yeah. So we are working, I talked to Mr. Mike Calagie, county exec earlier today, about trying to get that date sooner than August 18th. And so we are, we are working on that and hope to get a date and time out to the community just as soon as possible. So we're going to try to get it. We know there's a lot of information and questions and answers to the community. And so I've asked him if he can be available sooner than that. And he acquiesced. So don't have a specific date or time yet, but we will get that out. So hopefully sooner.
And just for the record, that is for the topic of La Quinta.
Correct.
On that. Okay. And we have a report out from the July 19th, 2023 closed session. Mr. Conneran?
Yes, Mayor. The action was to provide a contract with the Teamsters Union, which is on the agenda this evening. It is on consent item number 10.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Okay, thank you. Closing agenda item number two, moving to agenda item number three, approval of minutes. If there could be a motion, unless there's comment, a motion to approve the special meeting minutes of April 11th, 2023, and the regular minutes of April 11th, 2023.
So moved.
I think there was a tie, but I heard Feng Cahalan. Okay. Any comments? All right. City clerk, could you call the vote, please?
Councilman Papin?
Yes.
Councilmember Cahalan?
Aye.
Councilmember Feng?
Aye.
Mayor Snyder?
Aye. The two meeting minutes of April 14, 11th, excuse me, 2023, passed by a vote of four to zero.
And for the record, I'm guessing that Vice Mayor Goodman is having problems still connecting. So we do not have him at this time. All right. Moving on to agenda item number four, oral report from city committee and commission chairs. We have no oral reports. Coming up after that is public communication. This is for items that are not on tonight's agenda. And the timing will be two minutes. I have, I have six comments here and I don't know who's online. But first up is Jack Warner. And then next would be Roshan Kapoor. The mic up front is a little bit funny, so it's a little directional. And you might have me interrupt you if we can't hear you.
Jack Warner, I have lived in Millbrae since 1964. And I just comment about the last meeting. I understand, and I think everybody realizes where we are as far as Millbrae and where we stand on this. I would like to see us figure out some way, as a businessman, how we can supplement the loss of $600,000. So if you would come to the public and give us some ideas to let us jump in and help, that we would be able to come up with some ideas to support and take that, some of the load off of that $600,000. Secondly, in the years that I've been here, we've seen a lot of changes in Millbrae and they're not all good. I would like for the council to get out memorandums to the city on the obligations of the citizens to take care of their property, to be able to, what they have to do with their yards. I was very heavily involved with the tree maintenance that has been absolutely disregarded in a lot of cases on the pruning of trees, taking trees down. And those are responsibilities of the citizens. And I think there's a lot of people in Millbrae now that don't realize what their obligations are. It's not that they're not willing to do it. They don't know what they are. And if we can get out some kind of information to let them know what they're supposed to do, I think they'll see it. Because I serve on some boards, I'm involved with some nonprofits, and we take a big hit. Millbrae isn't thought of as being one of the progressive cities on the peninsula to take care of ourselves. And we can, if we get the word out on what to do. And so anything you can get us, anything you get out to the people of Millbrae, one item, I probably, a lot of people don't even realize it.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mr. Warner. Two minutes are up.
Two what?
Two-minute public comment period is up. Sorry, I was taking notes.
One last thing for the sheriff. I could be a decoy for the phone because I carry a flip phone.
Mr., thank you, Mr. Warner. Thank you.
But just try to get some stuff out so we can improve the site of the city.
Thank you. Roshan Kapoor? And then Sunny Aoyong?
Hello. I've been a resident here for almost 40 years. And I have a concern about two matters. First of all, how did we reach this debt of 20 million? We had a letter go out to us, to all of us, saying that the city is in a $20 million debt. And that kind of scares me. How much truth there is in that, I don't know. But I've got directly hit with water bills. Paid off my mortgage. I have no debt. But I live in a city that says it's got 20 million debt because of some wrongdoings, not to mention the name of certain people. Okay? And I want to be anonymous on that end because I would voice that personal opinion for headed to one individual anonymously. So I just read that I can call or voice my opinion then say it out in the public. But I am certainly been ahead of the water bill, for instance, two litigations, the highest water bill in the country. I did a Google search and Ohio said they had a high water bill. But that was not anywhere near what we have. So you take all the cities in the peninsula, everywhere, Birmingham, we have this high water bill. And two litigations were on the plate. Obvious, we pay $40 every two months for one litigation. City workers polluted the ocean. Another one for some services up on the hill. That was another concern. So being debtless, I'm in a city which says it's got $20 million of debt. Where's that coming from? What is this error?
Thank you, Mrs. Kapoor. Hang tight on, on the letter, which has a bunch of falsehoods in it. But we can't talk about it.
No, but this is something, as I said, I will call.
I'm happy to, and I have been communicating with the public individually on that and I'm happy to do so.
And I will, you know, I'll, I'll go ahead and go. But I'm saying my pocketbook, because of the litigations that the city gets.
Understood.
And doing a Google search, we pay the highest water bill. And that's not fair. Or negligence on part.
Thank you. There's no negligence.
Mayor, this is not anything, but I think it's important for the public to know that that letter did not come from the city. And we are not $20 million in debt. As a matter of fact, we're fiscal positive and have worked tirelessly over the last several years to actually improve the structural debt service that the city had, you know, circa 2015 and prior. So that's just a false statement in the letter. And I just want the public to know that we are not $20 million in debt. As a matter of fact, we're one of the few cities, if people read and do their research, that is solvent in San Mateo County.
Thank you, city manager. Sunny Aoyong, and I'm sorry if I messed up your name.
Hi, good evening, council members. My name is Sunny. I've been moving to Millbrae for two years. And I'm a businessman for the whole Bay Area. I have stores in San Francisco, South City, Santa Clara, and Oakland. I have seen what homeless problem could do to a city. If we don't treat this very seriously, it could impact the city very fast. And secondly, I want to express that from last week, we had a meeting with Mike Calagie. He, from what I find out, the cost of buying that hotel was $33 million. And I have contacted some of my development friends around the Bay Area. They were, they told me that the place worth about marketing price about less than $10 million, which, and also, I have reached out to Oakland Alameda. And Alameda has recently purchased two hotels for 260 unit. And the cost of it is only $24 million. So for us to buy a 90-unit hotel for $33 million is really overpricing. And there's a lot of lack of transparency on these issues. We couldn't find out and we don't know yet. And just hopefully you guys will take more consideration on this and also the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Young. And thank you for that meeting. We'd heard about a meeting, but didn't know who, what, where, when. Thank you. Alice Quang. And after Alice is Ron Raquel. And then Sissy Riley. You've got a bit of time there.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you all the council person. You guys were so hot. You get a lot of votes on conference. And thank you all. I'm Alice Quang, live in Millbrae since 1998. And these are beautiful speakers. Earlier said about the debt, you know, the insufficiency of fund. I believe our country is the biggest, you know, they owe a lot of money. And now, I believe California, that's owe a lot of money. And we all agree and harmless is a big issue. It's the issue is not the harmless person. They have a equal value of all of us. We all want to support them, helping them. But the problem is, who can handle these issues? Who is going to create the policy to helping them? And I, from my own personal experience, my financial judgment, my financial background, I've been in the financial field also almost 28 years. The policy is wrong. The harmless people, they don't do anything wrong. They're equal value as us. But who creates the problems? It's the government, the policy procedure, why more and more harmless and more and more money spent for them? Who is suffering? Still the people on the street. But who's getting money? Someone, not us. Us, and we, you're right, right? We don't owe any tax. Otherwise, we are not able to stand here. We are not, not paying the market. Otherwise, we are on the street. So we do all doing our good job. I believe so, right? But and the second, now the point, me and Sunny, when other friends and meet Michael Kelly, sorry if I say the right, Mike.
Ms. Quang, I'm so sorry. That's two minutes. But keep in mind, we're going to have the town hall minute and their meeting, and there are no limits on time at a town hall.
I present the more than 3,000 people who side petition. Please. But thank you very much, Mayor. You get my vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Quang. Ron, you're technically five. And then we've got Ms. Riley as six. Would you mind if Ms. Riley goes? Go ahead. Go ahead. You're fine. You're fine.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Sissy Riley. I'm living in Millbrae since 1995. So I have family here and I become listed broker and the financial advisor. I'm here today. I'm representing my labor, my colleague, and my past client who bought property in Millbrae for past 20 years. Say no, Home Key. I want to share with you, happened to me last month. I was in San Francisco driving my car, waiting for the traffic lights. Although the car behind me, so the one guy coming, not even the sidewalk, they're coming to there, use the metal pipes, hit my car. I was shocked. So I was on the phone talking to my friends. Then they told, she told me, do not get out. Because she knows San Francisco way around me. Do not get out across your window. I said, okay. Then I looked at the back. This, this guy, probably homeless, probably mentally ill, hit all the cars, bike, each one. And I heard bike, the smashed the windows, the glass shattered. And I, when I saw again, he's used all his strength, hit one car's the top. It's so scary and angry. Why is San Francisco like that? Because they allow the, they allow the homeless or some mentally ill doing this for us, for our taxpayers, for our, our good citizens. We want to you, please, tell the, no, say no to Home Key. When we voted for you, you tell us you care about Millbrae. You care about us. You love Millbrae. So now is the time to prove you are, keep your words. So all of us will vote you again.
And Ms. Riley, your time's up.
Sure. And we'll do it for you again.
Make sure that you're on our list. And I'm sure we will let the community know about the town hall coming up.
We remember you even after. We are Millbrae, we have.
Ms. Riley, thank you. Mr. Raquel. Mr. Raquel.
Hi, City Council. My name's Ron Raquel. I emailed the city council about a month ago, a group email, and hopefully that you will engage once the study has been completed on Millbrae Magnolia Avenue. Had over 300 signatures. This is not a singular issue. Safety is a very important thing. As I have mentioned, I've almost been hit 25 times in the last five years. And I'm sure I'm not the only one that has done that. And also for our street cleaning on our block. I mean, he basically just drives up and down. We should try to enforce street cleaning, have cars move out of the street. I mean, if we want to keep a clean appearance, I mean, it's just kind of disgusting, at least on my block on Willow, on the odd side and even side. And most people just leave their cars out. And it's kind of ridiculous how that service provided and people just kind of wash it aside. I think it's important to keep a clean city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Raquel. I have no further paper slips. Last call, if anybody from the public has a comment card on items not on tonight's agenda. City clerk, do we have anyone on Zoom?
Yes, Mayor. We have five speakers with their hands raised. And the order received is Cynthia Tan.
And for the public, I don't see who's on Zoom. The city clerk does. So she'll be calling the names.
Is it, is it my turn to speak? This is Cynthia Tan.
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening. La Quinta Inn is a short 10-minute walk distance from a number of schools in this neighborhood. The close proximity of the proposed homeless shelter to these schools will grow significant distress among parents, teachers, staff in our community, in our neighborhood. I strongly oppose the Home Key programs implementation at the La Quinta Inn Hotel, La Quinta Inn location, and request that the program be halted immediately. The potential safety risk and implications of placing a homeless shelter in such close proximity to numbers of schools cannot be ignored. I would like to request our honorable mayor, councilman and woman, to swiftly reach out to Lumita Elementary School, Green Hill Elementary School, Cappuccino High School, their parent teacher organization, AKA PTO, and San Bruno City, and inform them immediately via letters and email. So all families are aware of this current situation. So the community at large could voice their opinion and meet with you and San Mateo County Board Supervisor, Mike Calagie, in August, if that happens. Finally, this is our community, our neighborhood, our schools, our children, and that we must protect. So please act swiftly to remove such dire situation. I thank you for your listening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tan.
All right. Next speaker is Zhao. And Zhao, if you could state your full name for the record.
Hi, my name is Zhao Changhe. And thank you for listening to my voice. And I've lived in Millbrae for eight years. And I've lived in Millbury for eight years. And I love this community. It's sweet and quiet and really great for kids to grow up. And I want to express my concern on the San Mateo County's decision to repurpose La Quinta Inn in Millbury as a home key facility. I believe this is absolutely the wrong location for the program. And I, uh, ask the Millbury, our honorable mayor, the city councils to stand with us and urge San Mateo County to reconsider. Not only the hotel costs thirty-three million, so the way over market price, I'm accusing them abusing our taxpayers' money. And they should choose a cheaper hotel somewhere else. And we would like to hire third-party appraisal to evaluate the true value of the hotel so we can investigate if this is a fair trade. The operational cost every year is two-point-five million to just serve only one hundred people. It's way too high. And it's also put a huge financial burden on Millbury. And the, uh, look, the, it's devastating to the local economy with longstanding negative effect. It's not wise to turn profitable hotel into a home key shelter. The hotel contributes six hundred thousand dollars to the city, which we could use that money on our schools, on our roads, on our facilities, firefighters, all of that. But they, they are taking our resource away. Not only that, the hotel staff may lose their job. Nearby business may lose customers, the travelers and tourists. Without income to pay rent, they may become homeless because of this program. We don't want to create problem that make the homeless problem even worse.
Thank you, Ms. Tong. Your time is up. Thank you.
All right. Next speaker is Bonnie Jean Patton.
Hi, this is Bonnie Jean Patton. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening. Uh, I would like to know, I'd like to let you know, I object to the San Mateo County buying La Quinta for home key. I am concerned about the safety for our community and for our children's safety in our local schools and nursery schools as well, as I live a few blocks away from this La Quinta. And I am a longtime resident of Millbury. I was raised here. Uh, I oppose it. Also, too, I am very sad that the council members passed the sewer bill to be applied to our property tax. Outrageous. It will be a flat charge and we will not see a breakdown of what our expenses are. This is wrong. This is wrong. I don't use my water or sewer as my neighbors do. They don't use their sewer and water as I do. This is not right. It should not be a flat bill. It should have explanations as to what we are paying for so we can watch our charges. Thank you very much. You all have a good night. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Patton.
Next speaker is Lou. And Lou, if you could state your full name for the record, please. Lou, you can unmute yourself? Or did you see the pop-up?
Okay, are we okay now?
Yes, I can hear you. Please state your full name for the record, please.
Lou Sandrini. I received a letter from concerned citizens of Millbury that addresses City Manager Tom Williams, noting his conduct that includes bad behavior, poor performance, a severe and pervasive reputation, from other things, violating code of ethic policies, workplace harassment, instigating and promoting city litigation, and lying to and misleading staff, council members, and the public. The letter alleges or notes Williams' conduct in Millbury has caused the city costly litigation. And I can state from city business interactions with him that he is guilty of some of the bad conduct noted in the letter. I concur with the letter that the council should step in and replace Tom Williams. I encourage the leadership of citizens of Millbury to do more to formalize its organization and lead the group in coordinated actions to get the council to terminate the city manager. They were desperate to hire a manager after the previous manager left and made a serious mistake in hiring Mr. Williams. I ask you to take this seriously. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sandrini.
The next speaker is Sumant Rangji.
Thank you. My name is Sumant Rangji. I'm a Millbury resident. My children attend Millbury Public Schools. I would like to express my strong support for the, for the proposal to turn the La Quinta Inn into a permanent supportive housing site through the home key program. Professionally, I am a physician who works at San Francisco General Hospital and I am a professor of medicine at the University of California, San Francisco. Every day, I care for patients who are unhoused. I think it's important for the Millbury community to understand that in the Bay Area and throughout California, almost half of the unhoused population is over fifty years old and a rapidly growing proportion are over sixty-five years old. This is what I see every day in my work at San Francisco General, increasingly taking care of people who are not only unhoused but have serious medical problems. Permanent supportive housing, which is what is proposed for La Quinta Inn, is not a homeless shelter. Permanent supportive housing is for people who are unhoused and also have serious medical problems that require care. Being in supportive housing requires a lengthy and detailed intake process. It requires that the residents be able to pay rent and follow rules. I understand that there is always concern about introducing previously unhoused individuals into a community. As somebody who lives near the Millbury, um, near the proposed site and who has children, myself, who attend public schools, I personally do not have any concern about their safety. And I do not think that the introduction of a permanent supportive housing site will pose any danger to the community. I would ask that us in the Millbury community recognize that our first responsibility should be to be compassionate and open-minded and recognize that Millbury needs to do its part to address the, the crisis of homelessness that is literally killing people on the streets every day. And I ask that the City Council not only support, that support this project.
Thank you. And thank you for your service to the community.
The next speaker is G. Gonzalez. If you could state your full name for the record, please.
Yes. Yes, thank you. Chriselda Gonzalez. I am not a resident of Millbury. I am a property owner in San Bruno and I passionately support homelessness support programs. But I cannot believe that in our own communities, we have teachers, city workers, and people that work here that cannot afford to live here. And I would urge the city of Millbury to consider the impact that approving this La Quinta conversion will bring to the communities that surround Millbury. I also want to say that a lot of, uh, traffic, food traffic, that, uh, tourists, visitors go to Millbury for the food and for, you know, the, the stores that you have, that will be affected. Again, I, I believe in compassion, but I also want to say, why can't we have compassion for our own teachers in our own communities and city workers and so many families that have to work two or three jobs to afford rent? And yes, let's support the homeless people, but I think you need to be more thoughtful about your neighbors, including the people in San Bruno that will be affected by this. So, um, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez.
The next speaker is Olga Garcia.
Hi, it's Olga Garcia.
Apologize.
First, I want to say that I've lived in Millbury for about seven and a half years and I am a proud Millbury resident. I'm happy with the diverse community that we have here. I am a proud brown immigrant and an active taxpayer. I could not make it to last month's, uh, last month's council meeting, but I watched it on YouTube and just like one of the residents said, who is a lawyer and works with the homeless clients, I was sad and embarrassed from what I heard and the way people were expressing themselves about the transitional housing place. What happened to loving our neighbors? We should not assume that homeless people are pedophiles. Pedophiles hide in our communities and sometimes unfortunately in our families. They are not all drug addicts nor alcoholics and those too hide in our communities in plain sight. Some people fall into hard times and cannot afford the rent in the peninsula and that should be our focus, affordable housing. If we can extend a hand to people in need, this is our opportunity. This is unfortunately my only second council meeting I have attended, but I also got the letter, um, in the mail like every other, um, Millbury resident. And I also have some concerns that I hope and I encourage the city council to, um, you know, look into. And, uh, lastly, I just want to say that anybody that is serving in a city council, in a local government position that gets paid by taxpayers, they should not be racist. So please get to the bottom of it so we can have some answers and some clarification. Thank you for your time. And I want to say that I appreciate everybody on the council because it's a representation of the diverse community you serve.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia.
One more hand is raised is John C. And John C., please state your full name for the record.
My name is John Cheng. Thank you, Mayor and, uh, council members. And, uh, have a good evening. And, uh, I, I wanted, I wanted to say is that in change.org, it's already saying that the transparency, transparency is not just a request, it's our right, halt the repurposing of the La Quinta Inn. In the, it is a non-negotiable responsibility of San Mateo County to make, uh, all pricing information and appraisal reports related to repurposing of La Quinta Inn public to be, uh, transparent. And the current path is a significant impacting Millbury's financial stability through the loss of tax revenue. We consider this approach unjust and, and, and sustainable burden on our community. We are not against the need for a solution to homelessness. However, this solution should not come at the cost of destroying the community we cherish and call home, the city of Millbury. Thank you for, for your help. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Cheng. Do we have anyone else on Zoom?
John Cheng, you raised your hand again and for public comment is once, yes, that's why I'm basically sticking. Um, there's no other hands raised.
Okay. Having no further speaker cards, no one on Zoom, closing public comment for items not on the agenda. And give me a second to move to our next agenda item. This is our consent calendar and reading off the items for tonight's consent calendar. Item number five, receive and file monthly general fund financial report for the period ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. This is an informational item. Agenda item number six, approve by motion, a request from the Millbury Education Foundation, MEF, for the use of the Recreation Center Great Hall, Fitness Center, and fee waivers for the MEF Holiday Boutique on December ninth, twenty twenty-three. Action. Agenda item number seven, adoption of a resolution approving a lease for outdoor advertising display sign by and between the City of Millbury and Outfront Media LLC and authorize its execution by the city manager or designee. Action. Agenda item number eight, adoption of a resolution authorizing collection of fiscal year twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four stormwater fees on the San Mateo County tax roll. Action. Agenda item number nine, adoption of a resolution authorizing the city manager or designee to execute a professional service agreement with GHD consultants for the design of the water pollution control plant's sludge thickener system. Action item, rehabilitation project, um, action item. And, uh, final consent calendar is adoption of a resolution amending the moratorium of understanding between the City of Millbury and the Teamsters Local Eight Fifty-Six Miscellaneous and Sanitation Units effective July first, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. I've received no request to pull anything from consent and I have no cards pulling anything from consent.
Move approval of consent calendar.
Thank you, Councilwoman, uh, Pappen. Thank you, Councilman Fung. Any discussion? City Clerk, if you could call the vote, please.
Councilmember Pappen?
Yes.
Councilmember Cahalan?
Aye.
Councilmember Fung?
Aye.
Mayor Snyder?
Aye.
Consent calendar passed by a vote of four to zero.
And before, as I catch my breath and talk while I'm doing it, just congratulations staff on a number of items on the financial report. I had a couple of comments, but I can give them to the general manager. I think in our future financial reports, we should list the properties and parcels, the parcels in the acreage that do not pay property tax and what a loss that is to the community. I think that'll help the community better understand how we balance our budget here. And, um, I wanted to say thank you to Outfront Media for posting Beats and Brews out on the bulletin board out there. And again, to the Teamsters, um, we're very happy, a two-year budget, a two-year contract. Thank you for the negotiations. Thank you to our negotiation team. Well done to all of you. And thank you. With that, moving on to public hearing. This is agenda item number eleven. This is continuation of the July eleventh, twenty twenty-three meeting, waiving the first reading and introduce and ordinance amending, amending to Title Ten, Planning and Zoning, Chapter Ten Point Zero Five, Zoning, Article Two, Definitions, Article XXXII, or thirty-two, accessory dwelling units, and adding Article XXV, XXXV, Objective Standards and Affordability Requirements for Two-Unit Residential Developments and Urban Lot Splits in Single Family Residential Zones to Comply with the Requirement of Senate Bill Nine. This is an action item. City Manager, please take it away.
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor, members of the City Council. I would just like to introduce our planning manager, Mr. Roscoe Mata, for a presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. Roscoe Mata, planning manager. I'm joined with Bruce Baker from Placeworks. We'll be presenting just as this continuance of the last City Council meeting on this SB nine and eighty ordinance amendment. I'll just hand it over to Bruce just to summarize the revisions we made since our last meeting.
Thank you, Roscoe. Pleasure to be here, Mayor and Council again. You will recall, could we see the next slide, please? In, on July eleventh, we had a presentation and discussion from the council regarding the SB nine ordinance, which implements State Bill Nine, which allows for up to four units of housing on single-family residential lots. And, uh, the, uh, as well as an ADU and, uh, J-ADU, Junior ADU Ordinance Amendments, which are, um, to reconcile the current ordinance with current state law. So we made that presentation in July. There were several comments from council. After, after that meeting, uh, the, the public hearing was continued and we are coming back to you with two revisions to the ordinance. The first of which is to increase the maximum crawl space height for the ADU ordinance to thirty-six inches from eighteen inches. This will allow for more flexibility in building, constructing ADUs. And, uh, it should streamline that. The second revision is to eliminate the window location requirement of forty-two inches minimum for SB nine units, um, which was a subject of discussion with the council in our last, uh, meeting. In addition, we have included a map. We were asked to provide a map of, um, the, uh, one-half mile distance from High Quality Transit Corridor because this is the distance where state law precludes requiring parking for SB nine units or ADU units, um, within a half-mile radius of a high-quality within a half-mile radius of a High Quality Transit Corridor, and we have that on El Comino Real. So if we can go to the next slide, please. This map shows a gray area centered on El Comino Real. It's a half-mile from on either side. The properties in yellow are the properties that are eligible for SB 9 units. They are single-family residential units and R1 and R1 LL units. And you can see the properties that are within a half-mile radius of the El Comino Real. So with that, that concludes the presentation, actually, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, and I'm very appreciative of the map. It really does tell a story of how much of us are part of a dense transportation program. City Council, questions? Councilman, please.
Thanks, staff, for the revision. And I just wanted to address the public a little bit is that all these ordinance, including the revision, is to ensure that we have a pathway to success for all those permit applicants and, you know, project sponsors. We're here to make sure that they can use the legislation and make it work for them in the city. And we want to make sure that these ordinance are helpful and useful to our residents. Again, it's a matter of ensuring everyone has a pathway to success here in Millbrae. So I want to thank the staff for that, and when the council is ready, I'd like to make a motion to approve it.
Thank you, Councilman. So I have a question. When I read through the staff report, and it's kind of a dumb one, the emphasis state is putting on for ministerial improvement. But let's say for any of the houses that are within the SD 9 lot-splitting area, it doesn't come to council, it doesn't come to planning. Do they at least have to send postcards out to the houses within 300 feet? Or is that also gone?
No, they're not required to send.
They are not required?
It's similar to a building permit. Someone were to change windows to their house or add on to the back.
So you could wake up one day and, what is that thing with the big? A demolition, well, no, because you can't demolish the property. So, no, if the big hammer came out, you would know they're breaking a rule. But they actually don't even have to go to their next-door neighbor and say they're adding units next door? That's what the state of California has left us with in terms of trying to create neighbors who like each other?
That's correct.
That breaks my heart. That really does. I think, staff, you did a great staff report. I'm really glad to have this. To the public, if you read the staff report, these are what has happened in the past up in Sacramento. Who knows? We have new representatives in Sacramento, and I have faith on there. But this ministerial thing, it just amazes you. You won't even know. And some of us don't have neighbors that we talk to, but in a good neighborhood, we talk to each other, and we want that. And it makes it sad. And then the second part of this, if you've paid attention to me over the years, I keep bringing up historical preservation. The reason I bring it up is because I serve on some regional committees that do environmental impact reports, often under the National Guidelines, National Environmental Protection Act, which puts more weight on historic neighborhoods, of which in Millbrae, almost every neighborhood, except the Gateway, except Millbrae Estates up at the Old School on the top of the hill, and Sarah Station, should we ever get it built, almost all of Millbrae can become a historical neighborhood. And that means that these agencies, when they do their EIRs, they cannot ignore certain impacts which they have been doing to Millbrae. So I read in the staff report the reference to the historical neighborhoods. I know it's in our goal setting this year. I would encourage staff, please, please, if we can, I really want to do climate change work and get out of doing housing because housing is eating up all of our time collectively, staff, council, on that. But we need to bring those historic standards forward on that. And are they called the Historic Design? At any rate, it's our goal setting this year. You're going to see it coming. It doesn't mean we will dictate what you trim your windows with, but it really means looking at a neighborhood, and it will give us power to protect ourselves. So I hope the public understands that, even though this, like La Quinta, is somewhat out of our hands on that. Thank you, staff. I'm done moralizing, I guess, on that. If we can have a motion in a second.
We need to open the public hearing.
Oh, thank you. I'm sorry. Open for public comment, open the public hearing. Public comments. The city clerk gives me really good notes. I just ignored them.
There are no hands raised online, Mayor.
And I have no paper hands, so seeing no comments from the public on this very long, complicated motion tonight, I am closing public comment. If I could have a motion in a second to close public hearing?
Close public hearing, second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Pappan, Councilman Fung. No further questions. Could we have a vote on closing the public hearing? Have a vote, closing the public hearing.
Surely, Mayor. Councilmember Pappan?
Yes.
Councilmember Cahalan?
Aye.
Councilmember Fung?
Aye.
Mayor Snyder?
Aye.
The public hearing is closed.
Okay, council, any additional questions? Comments? That's what a darn good staff report does, doesn't it? If I could have a motion, then, to approve, and do you want me to reread it? Do we need to reread it? Mr. Conneran? Correct. So what we are being asked to do is to waive the first reading and
Introduce.
Introducing the ordinance as written, and if there can be a motion, in a second.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Fung. Thank you, Councilwoman Cahalan. Any further discussion? Okay, city clerk, please call the vote.
Councilmember Pappan?
Yes.
Councilmember Cahalan?
Aye.
Councilmember Fung?
Aye.
Mayor Snyder?
Aye.
Public hearing, item number 11, passed by the vote of four to zero.
Thank you and congratulations. Moving on to existing business. This is agenda item number 12, Self Help for the Elderly Semiannual Update. This is an informational. And, City Manager, if you could please introduce our guest.
I would like to introduce our representative from Self Help for the Elderly, Cece.
My name is, thank you, Mayor Schneider, and thank you, City Manager Williams. My name is Winnie Yu. I am Director of Programs and Administration at Self Help for the Elderly. And good evening, everyone, council members. Thank you for the opportunity here to present Self Help for the Elderly Millbrae Senior Center activities for the last six months. Could we advance the slide? So Self Help for the Elderly is a nonprofit organization started in 1966. We serve 40,000 seniors annually across five Bay Area counties, in San Francisco, Samatelle, Santa Clara, Contra Costa, Alameda. And we have a Millbrae Senior Center here in Samatelle County, as well as a Samatelle Senior Center down at Central Park in Samatelle County. Here at Millbrae, we provide three key areas of program services, activities, congregate meals that serve seniors, 60-plus, and adults with disabilities, Asian-style meals five days a week, activities and classes, including physical wellness activities, holiday, birthday celebrations, et cetera, nutrition education and consultation by our registered dietitian, providing nutrition counseling on individual, one-to-one basis, or a quarterly nutrition education to a group of seniors. Any questions on this slide? If not, then, in the interest of time, I'll speak a little faster and hopefully not delay your evening.
No, no, no. No, it's okay. We're okay.
Okay, thank you. And additional services at Millbrae Center include home-delivered meal service, which is a centralized part of our Samatelle Center operations, available to qualified homebound individuals, and they are served daily. In the past six months, we've had 611 hot meals delivered to five participants in the city of Millbrae specifically. Any questions on this slide? If not, the next slide, please. So there are some highlights for the period of January through June 2023 for the services that we provided at the Millbrae Senior Center for Millbrae residents, 117 new clients. These are unduplicated, not previously participating in our programs, that joined the senior lunch program. And 49 are Millbrae residents, 69 are non-Millbrae residents. There was a field trip to the Faloli Gardens in February, which was wonderful because we've been in pandemic shutdown for a while, and we were able to actually go out with volunteers, our senior escort services, to enjoy the beautiful gardens in spring. Is it tight? Okay, the fifth annual celebration of the Millbrae Center was held, actually, at the Millbrae Rec Center, which is beautiful. And we actually had Mayor Schneider and Vice Mayor Goodman, everybody, council members, join, which was a really festive and wonderful activity. Mothers' and Fathers' Day celebration, birthday celebrations, and joint events with the Millbrae senior community that were arranging from 90 to 120-plus guests, which were very exciting because we have that big rec space that we could really have an event that's representative of the residents of Millbrae. And really lovely to see that happening in that beautiful space. No questions, then, maybe next slide? Okay, the congregate meals program, if we can just go through this, 3,281 total meals served to 2,174 Millbrae residents and 1,107 meals served to non-Millbrae residents. So almost double. So we're very excited that this Millbrae lunch program is servicing more Millbrae residents than even in the last semiannual report. Any questions on this slide?
I do have one question. If we had, do they need to come five days a week? Or can they just come to a meal, you know, when they would like?
Absolutely. They don't need to come five days a week. It's really based on their schedule, when they would like to come in. We just like to know a little bit in advance so we can make sure we order the right amount of lunches because they're not cooked on site.
How many, how would they RSVP and how far in advance?
So they can come in the center anytime during regular business hours when we run the lunch program, or they can call, which will have the number at the end of the slide, to just let us know if they're interested to come the next day. You know, then maybe we can order, you know, a little bit in advance to make sure that we have sufficient meals.
Very good. Thank you.
Sometimes some lunch items on the menu are more popular. Fish, I think, and spare ribs night, lunch. So that's when we usually run out more than other days.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next slide, please. So in terms of activities and classes, we've had chair exercises. There were 78 total attendants and 55 residents. 55 attendants and 15 participants. And for non-Millbrae residents, there were 23 exercises and then seven participants. Dance classes, 1,477. For Millbrae residents, there were 38 participants, and for non-Millbrae residents, 67 participants. For the karaoke, 186 total attendants. 22 participants that were Millbrae and 15 that are non-Millbrae. For the Mahjong, 116 total attendants, 12 participants are from Millbrae, and three are non-Millbrae. Tai Chi, 176 total attendants, 19 participants from Millbrae and 11 non-Millbrae participants. Technology learning for the period of March to June, there are 102 total attendants, 13 participants from Millbrae and 20 not from Millbrae. Any questions on this slide? Yes.
This is actually, and I see our Recreation Director Hannah in the back of the room. I have a parent that's turning 96 and getting less and less mobile. And so when I read the slide in the packet and saw the chair exercises, it made me wonder that maybe our recreation program, maybe there's some cross-communication here that we might need to advertise and do more chair. I'm having a hard time doing yoga because one knee doesn't work the way it used to. And there's chair yoga that could really help us, especially those of us who are losing mobility in our shoulders. So when I saw that, that was exciting. And Recreation Director Moran, just a bug in your ear. Thank you.
And for those who are in the audience or who are functionally not able to come and ambulate to the center, there's actually, maybe on KCSM, used to be a Sit and Be Fit on public television, which does the same thing in the comfort of their home. If it's raining or it's extreme heat events, they don't feel comfortable coming out to the center. That's a great segment that's available at home.
And I just also want to thank you for working with our youth advisory committees on the senior technology programs as well because this program, obviously, it benefits our seniors, and it's just as much as it benefits our youth. We give them an opportunity to work with our seniors and give them some leadership opportunities and working with everyone in the community. And just, you know, seniors get what they need, and also the youth also do what they're good at. And so that's a wonderful collaboration. Thank you for that.
Thanks so much, Councilmember Fung. Actually, this inter-generation programming has wonderful benefits for both generations. It allows for shared memory, shared experience, and bonding, and growth. So we're very excited that we can do that and expand our programming from the last semiannual report. So thank you for the support. Next slide, please. We've also done educational workshops, including fraud and financial abuse prevention, identity theft and scam, which our seniors unfortunately are more vulnerable and susceptible to. Vocal studies, singing actually has a lot of therapeutic effects using music, and field trip outings, as well as floor arrangement, that folks really enjoy. Any questions? If not?
Sign me up for flower arranging.
I love Iki Mada myself, and I did some courses at the local community college. I totally understand. Yes. Next, so photos from activities and classes. We've had our Lunar New Year, 90-plus guests attended. The Faloli Field Trip, fifth-year anniversary, there was 150-plus guests who attended. Mother's Day Celebration, 80-plus guests, and Fathers' Day Celebration, 65 guests. Sure, there's a little less gender parity there for Fathers' Day. But, you know, we're really, really great. And in some places, we actually do Fathers' and Mothers' Day celebrations. So then, you know, it's a celebration for everybody. Next, we'll see some photos that we could share from our activities where the seniors are enjoying at the center. It are flowers, and they're celebrating with donating flowers and doing the flower arrangement. It's always a big hit. Other activities, learning Mahjong, Tai Chi, chair exercises. Though you can see that they're following a video so that they can do the exercises properly. And as well as this is our field trip to Faloli Gardens. You can see the big smiles on everybody's faces. It's just a beautiful visit, and everybody loved it. So thank you for everyone who volunteered that day, and thank you all for the opportunity to present. I think that's the end of my presentation. Next slide. There are more pictures of, thank you so much, Chief. You're in one of them, of our Lunar New Year celebrations. So thank you. And we have Vice, yeah, Vice Mayor Goodman, and actually several council members who joined us. And we even have, at the fifth-year anniversary, you will recognize familiar faces here of our, also, what I want to highlight, celebration of our super seniors, those who are 90-plus, who enjoyed the celebration with us. And they're awesome contributing members of our society. It's a great way to thank them and honor them. So that was a wonderful event. Thank you for supporting that. And mothers' Fathers' Day celebrations, had wonderful guests in attendance and wonderful memories shared. And Vice Mayor Goodman was also there to join us. Nice. And the information, where to find us. So the number is 415-319-4115. So please leave a message with your name and number, and let us know if you're interested to join our program, and we'd love to have you join. Questions from the audience?
Thank you, and thank you for coming back and giving us these updates. It's really nice to see good news, and sometimes we really need to see the good news on that. So very, very happy with everything. Council, comments?
Councilwoman Cahalan?
I just want to say thank you. It's, you know, each, every six months when you come and give the reports, it's just really exciting, like our mayor said, to see all the good work that's happening. And in my other job, I work with Meals on Wheels, so I very much know, you know, the challenges that seniors face when they're homebound. And so to see all these programs where people can come together and reduce that isolation and loneliness and engage with each other is really wonderful. And so glad it's happening right here in Millbrae for our residents. One thing I'll throw out, I don't know if the number of participants on home-delivered meals is small because there just isn't that need in Millbrae, or if y'all don't have the capacity for more. in Millbrae, or if y'all don't have the capacity for more. But there are some more resources happening with Meals on Wheels for San Mateo County. So I'd be happy to connect if you'd like to talk about that. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Cahalan. I'm actually very interested in that because we do have a limit on the volunteer capacity to deliver meals because the funding with the county is limited. So that would be great if there's additional resources so we can provide more services on that. Thank you.
Counsel, if I could just add to that from Meals on Wheels invites us to attend an event every year. COVID was a little bit weird. And at the time, the volunteers delivering the Millbrae meals from Menlo Park were from Redwood City. So it is something maybe we can do as a city is to encourage. And what I was told is that sometimes when you get people who've just retired, before they get into their whole new life and fill up all that space, that's that good time to get the recent retirees to serve a meal once a week. But they do make that commitment. It is a commitment. Again, you can go on vacation, but maybe we can do a public event or a public press release saying, these programs need volunteers. And I think it's Peninsula Volunteers that runs the San Mateo County Meals on Wheels on that. So yeah, let's work on that together and make sure everybody at home is getting food.
That would be great.
And the self-checkup.
Yeah, the wellness, we do an assessment.
A wellness check.
Yeah. I think it's also that the volunteers we've had have aged and they are no longer wanting to or able to volunteer. So we constantly have to cultivate a newer generation of volunteers. So anything that you can help would be greatly appreciated.
Maybe we need to think about having a volunteer day, just the groups that have volunteer activities and how to get informed. I was thinking it's something we could link into maybe the new version of Monster March, you know, come and meet the community groups on that.
And I think it's not just our organization, but putting a plug for nonprofits in general. It's just been hard post-pandemic to revamp because the need is greater. Unfortunately, the staffing is not able to come up to speed because of the limited funding, but also limits in volunteers. So thank you for your consideration.
Let's see. I mean, nothing ventured, nothing gained, huh?
Thank you.
Sorry, staff, more work. Counsel. Go ahead, Counselwoman.
This is just an amazing program. We are so very thankful that Self Help for the Elderly has joined us in Millbrae. Can't say enough about the benefits to our community as a whole. It's just amazing. And the growth you've shown here, the new participants, is just wonderful to see. So we support you. We are so thankful that you are here. And anything we can do to help get the word out, we are pleased to do so. So thank you to everyone in your organization. Thank you for being here. It's just amazing. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Papin.
Thank you for coming to our city, bringing volunteers to our city, bringing food to our city, and serving our seniors. That's, I cannot say enough of what you do and how important it is for all of us. Hundreds of seniors' lives are being enriched every day because of what you do. Also bringing opportunities for our youth to also be more, that multi-generational interactions and that connection is extremely important here. So we appreciate that very much. I had recently an opportunity to meet with Daisy, who is providing food to your organizations every day. Just firsthand seeing that kitchen producing hundreds of meals every day, nutritious meal that serve hundreds of seniors. Just the dedication, that level of care that has been exhibited throughout. It's just have to see it and be a part of it to understand what goes on the thoughtfulness every day, just to make sure that the noodles sort of taste crispy as it should. Figuring out the time it takes to get there and the person who opens up that packet and eat it. So I cannot be more proud and be more encouraged for your involvement every day. Anything at all, if, you know, we as a city, from a resource perspective, whatever it is, that we can be more helpful to you, don't be afraid to ask. It's, we're here to help. Thank you so very much.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Fong. And thank you, Mayor Schneider, for the opportunity for us to operate this much-needed program. I've worked for Self Help for the Elderly now almost 15 years. And really, my grandmother raised me. So I hope that in one day when I'm her age, that someone will be there to take care of me as well. So this work sustains me, and I think it sustains the volunteers. And I am grateful to be part of this wonderful organization and doing this work. So thank you.
And before we let you go, I made a boo-boo. I have no public speaker cards, and we have nobody on Zoom, so closing public speaking. Again, as the council has said, thank you so much. Good luck and keep up the good work. Also know, now that we're coming into the heat area, we should probably make sure we've linked in with Self Help for the Elderly about cooling centers. We found that often our seniors will not leave home to come to a cooling area. So that's another thing from our emergency response efforts that we need to work on. But let's keep that door open and know that they can come down and be nice and cool in the jacuzzi room, and we'll make sure they're hydrated. It's, I don't know about other seniors. I have a heck of a time keeping my senior hydrated.
Yes. That's a mutual challenge.
Yeah. Okay, good. It's not just our household.
No, no.
So, well, very good. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 13. This is adoption of a resolution awarding a construction contract to VNH Builders of Burlingame, California, for the Millbrae Library Makerspace Project. I'm City Manager.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to introduce our Director of Engineering and Public Works, Mr. Sam Batista.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Sam Batista, Director of Public Works. And tonight, I'd like to welcome and introduce Ms. DeNae Ramirez from the San Mateo County Libraries, who will be also presenting after I do a brief introduction. So next slide, please. So just to give you some information and background on the project, San Mateo County Library, they prepared a strategic plan which includes the goal to create spaces that support discovery, enrich lives, and uplift the community. There are three dedicated makerspaces here in the county, one at Half Moon Bay, one in Brisbane, and one in Atherton. Additionally, dedicated makerspaces will be planned for Foster City, Belmont, and of course, here in Millbrae. Next slide, please. So what is a makerspace? So I will bring DeNae over to the podium so she can give her presentation.
Thank you, Sam. Good evening. My name is DeNae Ramirez, Deputy Director, San Mateo County Libraries, Mayor Schneider, members of the Millbrae Council. It is a pleasure to be here this evening to have this opportunity to talk with you about a makerspace for Millbrae Library. With this presentation, I hope to spur your curiosity and evoke amazement at all that is possible for the Millbrae community as makers. Next slide. San Mateo County Libraries has a Makerspace Master Plan that was approved by the Library Joint Powers Authority Governing Board in 2018. The Makerspace Master Plan serves as our guiding document for all of our makerspaces throughout our library system. The plan was developed with our communities. It includes subject matter, expert input, and incorporates ideas and trends from other makerspaces. It ensures that our makerspaces meet system-wide objectives while customizing services to meet our local needs. Our tagline, "Everyone is a maker," is intended to be inclusive and approachable, highlighting that anyone and everyone can be a maker. Our staff technology work group created a video about makerspace and making, and so I'm excited to share it with you right now.
Making pillows. First, we need two circles, and then we sew it. And when we're done, we decorate it.
A makerspace is a place where people can get really, really hands-on, right? So a lot of folks, me included, learn by trying things out, by making mistakes, by getting my hands dirty. And so the makerspace is a perfect place in order to learn these new technologies.
Libraries have always been institutions that share resources and skills while building a community. And makerspaces are another way to accomplish this. Through the Makerspace Initiative, we want people to learn something new and feel more confident.
Well, mostly, I 3D printed with my friend Leo. He actually taught me how to use it. He taught me how to make them. He taught me how to make a double, like you could erase it, double it, make it bigger, make it smaller. It took us a long time. It took us almost 11 hours to do, but it was actually worth it because we learned patience for doing all the printing.
This set I decided to do, chequers and chess. So I have the chess pieces and the checker pieces. I'm just finishing the board. And then I made these little crowns for minions. So they go like that when they're kings.
I like making music inside here because if you have a recording studio here, which is pretty good. They're my library, got a recording studio, which is professional.
All the young people, they need technology, you know? They need the area to play, not school.
Something like you can access every day. I can see the speakers, camera, and computers. And I can play with it.
Making in the library to me means using your imagination and your mind to create something new, whether that be VR or 3D printing or any of the machines that we have here.
I am learning so much. I'm kind of computer deliberate. And so I've learned how to use Tinkercad, and I've learned how to use Thingiverse. Sometimes I mess up, but it's just great to have the opportunity. And I've received a lot of help on how to do things.
San Mateo County Libraries believe that everyone is a maker, and this is the cornerstone of our approach. We want to serve children through seniors, and we want to provide resources and support for beginners, intermediate makers, through advanced makers.
So San Mateo County Libraries is recognized for creating spaces that are inviting and flexible, and that support discovery, enrich lives, and uplift the community. Over the past five years, we've opened dedicated makerspaces in three of our communities, including Half Moon Bay, Brisbane, and most recently, Atherton. An additional makerspaces are planned for Foster City, Belmont, San Carlos Libraries, and of course, Millbrae Library. The first of our makerspaces opened with the Half Moon Bay Library in August 2018, and showcases a collaborative workspace with cutting-edge technology, sewing machines, and much more. Our Brisbane Library in Makerspace opened in October of 2020, complete with 3D printers, a Glowforge laser cutter, sewing machines, virtual reality, and GoPros. And our Atherton Library in Makerspace opened just last year and features our first state-of-the-art digital lab and memory lab. In addition to all of the wonderful opportunities a makerspace provides, a digital lab can make technology and software available to the public that may not otherwise be accessible. In our digital labs, a library visitor can edit a feature film, a YouTube video, a TikTok, create a website, use AutoCAD to design a home garden, create a podcast, or restore and enhance old photos. Our makerspaces are community-driven, and each space is designed with the community's interests in mind. Based on community input, we know the Millbrae community has a great deal of enthusiasm about the programs and activities that can be offered in a dedicated makerspace. Specifically, the community members have prioritized arts and crafts, media arts, prototyping, coding, and robotics. Sewing is a popular activity with our Millbrae patrons, and they are eager to have a space for sewing their creations. Some of you may know that Elise Staples, the Millbrae Library Manager and talented sewer, first pitched the idea to make sewing machines available for checkout in our libraries. Messy, hands-on activities work well in a makerspace. These spaces are designed with resistant flooring and wipeable surfaces to allow for those science experiments that may get your hands dirty. Experimenting and getting messy is educational and fun for all age groups. We encourage learning and experimentation in our makerspaces without worrying if that baking soda volcano erupts on our maker tables. And virtual reality is an example of technology that will be available in the Millbrae Makerspace, and it's as popular with adults as it is with teens. VR allows users to go anywhere in the world virtually. With library VR equipment, a community member virtually visited his childhood hometown in China, bringing tears to his eyes and ours. In a flexible makerspace, the community can actively create, or the space can be transformed into a classroom-style configuration to host maker workshops, events, and trainings. In the Millbrae Makerspace, we anticipate hosting workshops that are led by the staff, the community, or an expert in the field. In this photo, Millbrae staff member Debbie Huey is leading a workshop to familiarize the Millbrae community with a prototyping software program called Tinkercad. As you can see, the possibilities of learning within a makerspace are endless. And now for the Millbrae Makerspace. We're pleased to work with architect Mark Schatz from ELS Architecture and Urban Design to build a beautiful new makerspace for the Millbrae community. The makerspace will be located in the existing computer room, and the renovation will include new flooring, paint, and cabinets with a sink. The custodial room will be reconfigured to accommodate a new Makerspace alcove, complete with a green screen that will be used for digital and film work, which was also prioritized by the community. This was a community-driven process, engaging Millbrae residents through both survey and community meetings. Input was gathered through an evening design workshop, a teen focus group, and a display that introduced the makerspace concept to the public and requested feedback. And now for the moment we've all been waiting for. You are looking at a rendering of the beautiful new Millbrae Makerspace. This space was designed with input from the Millbrae community, city and library staff, and friends of the Millbrae Library. This new space will provide a place for visitors to come, gather, collaborate, and inspire one another. Community members of all ages will learn timeless skills, problem-solving, critical thinking, creativity, and curiosity. Mayor Schneider, members of the council, I would like to thank you and thank Millbrae staff for the support you've provided to move this project forward. I would also like to give a very special thank you to the Millbrae Friends of the Library, who gave a generous donation which made this project possible. And we would not have been able to do this project without them. So together, San Mateo County Libraries and the city of Millbrae will create a space that supports discovery, enriches lives, and uplifts the Millbrae community. Thank you very much for your time today, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Great presentation. Counsel? Okay, I wondered if there was more talking about the contract. Okay.
Okay, yeah, so now.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Batista. Don't want to take away your time.
No problem. Anyway, as DeNae said, the project will renovate that existing computer room. New flooring, new paint, install new cabinets with a sink. We'll have to install a new exhaust fan for ventilating laser cutters. We are reconfiguring the custodial room to accommodate new Makerspace alcoves. And then we'll also install a new partition and doors to separate the staff workroom from the public. the public. Next slide. The project is fully funded by a generous donation from the, from the Friends of the Millbrae Library and Library JPA Funds. In June of this year, the project did go out to bid, and in July, we received seven bids. VNH Builders is the lowest apparent bidder, and staff called their references, and we received satisfactory, satisfactory feedback. Staff recommends awarding the construction contract to VNH Builders of Burlingame, California in the amount not to exceed $284,958. So with that, the staff recommendation is to adopt a resolution awarding a construction contract to VNH Builders and authorize the city manager to execute the contract and all contract change orders up to the project contingency of 15% for a total construction budget of $327,708 for any additional or unforeseen work. And that concludes our short presentation. So if you have any questions for Ms. Ramirez or I, we are available to answer your questions.
Thank you, Director Batista. Questions? Okay, then I've got a couple. First of all, I've been, I've just been to the Atherton Library a month ago, and the Maker Space is beautiful. It does. And I wouldn't be a commissioner on the State Commission for Market Development without saying this. It has recycled content tiles, actually tiles on the wall from Kilns. Were we able, within this budget, to put any recycled content or green building materials in?
I believe the flooring is, has recycled content in, in that flooring.
Okay. I mean, obviously, the Atherton Newtown Center had plenty of money going into it, and it's absolutely stunning. And Half Moon Bay's Maker Space is so great. But my question is, so the rec, our rec program has a quilting club, and they have sewing machines. Will that, how will we be, and then we've got Millbrae Community Television that has a green screen and pre-COVID was teaching classes in videography. How would we coordinate and make sure that we're all supporting each other on this?
Absolutely. It's a great question. We went through the process and identified with the community those things as priorities, so the sewing and also the video and film work. So we know that there's a lot of, of interest in the Millbrae community for those types of activities. And, and with that, you know, the library, we really value our community partnerships. And I think having partnerships with all, you know, those organizations will allow us to, you know, to bring more people into the library, but we're also happy to have staff go out and do making out in the community as well. That's a big part of our making is not just, and, and also part of our philosophy as a library is taking our activities and taking them out beyond our physical library spaces out into the community and other areas. So I would say if there is a partnership that is possible, we are absolutely interested in that.
I'll throw one more out there. Millbrae has, has a Millbrae Camera Club. It's one of the last remaining camera clubs. My mom and dad were founding members 60 years ago. And we've been trying to get them to participate with the Millbrae Art Show, and we can never seem to get the communication going, but they have amazing photographers, some of whom are retired and may have skills that can add to this and can really teach people, whether you're using your iPhone or your Galaxy or a real, another camera, some things on that. But just how we make those connections, I would dearly love our camera club showing off their work because the photographers do gorgeous work. And we have lots of blank walls that could benefit from that. So just, I hope we, we, obviously, I support this. I'm so happy to see it. I'm, I'm very happy. I understand that the city is supporting it. The Friends of Library is providing the cash, but the city is supporting all of the administration, grant management, staff time, and that. So it, and then with the library itself, it's a great project. So I couldn't be happier, but I just want to make sure that we have that coordination. And if we could ever get the camera club, which I'm ashamed to say I have connections to, but can't get them back into us, it would be marvelous.
Well, one of the things that I think is a great opportunity, and one of the things that we're looking to do in the Maker Spaces is not just have them be staff-led, but also be community-led. So if there's an opportunity to be, bring a community member in that has a making skill that they can share with the rest of the community, we'd love to have them.
Great. With that, opening it up for public comment.
Mayor, there are no hands raised.
No, no, public comment on Zoom. I have no speaker slips. Closing public comment. I believe we need a motion. Make a motion. Councilwoman Cahillan?
Pappan, second.
Councilwoman Pappan, second. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Councilmember Pappan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cahillan?
Aye.
Councilmember Fung?
Aye.
Mayor Schneider?
Very happy yes.
Agenda item number 13, passed by a vote of four to zero.
And make sure, when do we think it might be done?
We are hoping by the first of the year, around that time.
Very good. So we'll look, something to look forward to in the, the dog days of January.
Yes, yes.
Very good. Thank you. All right, moving on to new business. Agenda item number 14, adoption of a resolution rescinding water shortage emergency and enacting the city's 2020 Water Shortage Contingency Plan Stage Two, Resolution 22-41 that was adopted on June 14, 2022, and enacting the Water Shortage Contingency Plan Stage One. And city manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to introduce Andrea Papajon, who is our Environmental Services Manager for our presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Schneider, councilmembers, Andrea Papajon, city of Millbrae. So the purpose of the presentation is to discuss rescinding the water shortage emergency and enacting the city's 2020 Water Shortage Contingency Plan, the WSCP, Stage Two, and enacting the WSCP, Stage One. Next slide, please. As you know, recent, the recent drought was three years, and that was followed by, oh, three years, which began three years after the record-setting drought of 2012 to 2016. So I'd like to just review some of the events over the last couple of years. In 2021, the governor had issued proclamations that the state of emergency exists due to drought conditions and directed the state agencies to take immediate action to preserve water supplies. Then in 2022, in March 2022, the governor signed Executive Order N 722, directing the state water board to consider adopting emergency regulations and implement Level Two of the WSCP. And last June, June 14, 2022, the city council declared a water shortage emergency and enacted WSCP, Stage Two. Next slide, please. So as we know, late in '22 and early '23, Northern California had a series of seven strong or greater-strength storms that hit the region, and the hydrological conditions improved. So in March, the governor terminated portions of the executive order regulating the emergency regulations and the enactment of the WSCP, Stage Two. Then, following the SFPUC, rescinded their water shortage emergency in April of 2023, and the SFPUC issued a Water Supply Availability Update Letter, and it notified agencies that there would be sufficient supply for the upcoming year. Next slide, please. So this is, this chart shows the fiscal year 2324 projected water demands. The blue and white stripe bar on the right is the projected demand for the, this coming, this fiscal year 2324 of 785 million gallons. And this is consistent with our 2020 Urban Water Management Plan. The total unconstrained demand from the 2020 Urban Water Management Plan was not adjusted. There was no significant new developments that were not already considered in the plan, and there were no new, no significant loss of accounts and no other significant factors. And the unconstrained demand refers to the total demand before accounting for any demand reductions, such as from the WSCP. Okay, next slide, please. So now the fiscal year 2324 supply. This chart shows the supply is sufficient to meet demands. This is according to the SFPUC, the Water Supply Availability Update Letter, which was sent in April. So it is assumed that the supplies for the city are up to our individual supply guarantee, our ISG of 1,150 million gallons per year. And we considered locally applicable criteria. There are no facility or infrastructure issues that are anticipated that would affect the supply, and there's no local regulatory conditions that are anticipated. And as I mentioned, the governor reduced the emergency drought requirements through N 523, so there are no other state regulatory conditions. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned, supplies are sufficient to meet our demand. We recommend likewise rescinding the water shortage emergency in the WSCP, Stage Two. But given the multi-year nature of recent drought, we recommend adopting Stage One of our WSCP. Stage One requires voluntary 0% to 5% demand reduction target. It would involve expanding our public information campaign, increasing water waste patrols, and other landscape restrictions. And then the city will continue to monitor the supply conditions and customer response to the demand reduction efforts adjust as appropriate. Okay, next slide, please. So potential benefits of adopting Stage One of the WSCP are to really maintain water conservation habits. We'd like to continue to work with our residents and businesses to build and maintain long-term conservation habits so that it prepares us for when the weather pendulum swings back to dry years. And as I mentioned, it's a, you know, voluntary water conservation measure, 0% to 5%, and with minimal use restrictions. Other suppliers that are currently implementing Stage One are Cal Water, Mid Penn, and the city of Hayward. Next slide, please. So Millbrae is committed to water use efficiency and conservation. These are a list of the nine programs that we subscribe to through Bosca. So, you know, we look forward to just managing and implementing these for our residences, our businesses, and schools. I won't go into details, but happy, you know, to discuss them at a later date. And then the next slide, please. You know, our mantra in California is water conservation is a way of life. And so we also have water-saving devices available for pickup at City Hall, Monday through Friday, from 9 to 4. We recommend you test your toilets for leaks at least once a year. Use water sense or water-saving showerheads, and put a layer of mulch around your trees and plants. Okay, next slide, please. So staff recommends adoption of resolution rescinding the water shortage emergency and enacting the city's 2020 Water Shortage Contingency Plan, Stage Two, and enacting the WSCP, Stage One.
Thank you, Ms. Papajon.
Yeah. Thank you. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions? Just a couple of them. I, I think I may have scared the Bosca Board. So we had our Bosca Board meeting last week, and then the previous month, we had the Policy Committee, of which I was asked to serve on. And we are beginning to work on the water plan for 2045, and part of that plan is whether or not Bosca will accept permanently the city of San Jose and the city of Santa Clara. We had had a brief discussion about making sure that should that happen, that doesn't impact our individual supply guarantee. And within the Plan 45 formula, they talk about if cities don't use it, we may lose it, although it's more complicated than that. So I will say that the director, the CEO called me today saying, Anne, I'd really like to talk to you, and I said, I'm really busy. But maybe staff needs to help me understand better what these formulas are. I have no problem going with Tier One. I will say at the Bosca meeting last week, there was a strong encouragement for every Bosca member to continue with all of the water conservation project attitudes that our public has gained right now. So if I'm wearing my Bosca Board hat, I, we want to maintain all of that to the public. But I, I think maybe we should consider some additional programs. I recently went through a bathroom remodel and finally got rid of a 1988 toilet. Now, it had a brick in it, but I finally got rid of that old toilet, but they have, we haven't had toilet rebates for a long time. We, as being the liaison to MCAC, have met with the manager, took us quite a while, but had a lovely walk-through OSH, Outdoor Hardware Supply, about how we might be able to partner more for Adopt a Spot, how maybe outdoor hardware supply could provide drought-tolerant plants, so that when our new drought-tolerant landscape guidelines come out, we could work on that, and that we could have trees that will show up in the tree ordinance as trees that work well in our climate with our wind and with the new drier conditions or the new saltier conditions. So I, I want to, I'm happy to go to Tier One, but I think this is a good time to step up with additional conservation programs. Some of these might be subscription services from Bosca, and I know we've used some of those for the, the rain, I can never tech, I'm always got BPACs, so I never get to make them. Yes, some of, well, the rain barrel, and then the, the.
Rocio Smart Irrigation.
That, and the one where you build a rain garden. The rain garden workshop on that. But I, I think we need with our messaging to continue getting people, we'll see what happens with the artificial turf ordinance, but that fits really nicely into, we can look good, we can improve the way our yards look, we don't have to hardscape them, and be water-conservative on that. So anyway, Sam, I might have really scared Ms. Sankula. She was off sick that night, but I got this phone call today. I feel like I'm in the doghouse. So anyway, I'm happy to support this. So any other comments? I have no speaker cards on this. Do we have any public comment?
There are no public comments online, ma'am.
Okay. Closing public comment, bringing it back to council. Do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve it. Obviously, I just want to make a couple of quick comments here. Leak detection is such an important piece of measure we can do to ensure that these extremely valuable natural resources, drinking water, does not go to waste. You know, there are devices, just for the benefit of the public, there are devices that nowadays you could put in, you know, in terms of, just a little device you could put on your incoming water line to see if there's a continuous run of water, even though when you're, for example, not flushing your toilet, not using a faucet, not being in a shower or not running a washing machine, there are these devices that you could put in there that whenever water runs, then you get a notification. And so if you see these things continuing notifying you, and yet you're not using any water devices that is consuming water, then you have a leak. And, and those are some of the important things, simple, but yet very important things that homeowners can do to help reduce the risk of leaks, which contributed to a lot of water usages every day, quite frankly. So, and to that end, I'm sure our residents are very conscientious about, you know, conservation of water. Frankly, they are getting reminded every couple of months. So to that end, I'm confident that our residents will continue to practice conservation to the extent possible to ensure that we treat these valuable natural resources as they should be treated, because they're extremely important for us. Thank you.
So I believe we have a motion by Councilman Fung. We have a comment from Councilwoman Pappan. Go ahead, please. I'm sorry.
We have a comment from Councilwoman Papen. Go ahead, please. I'm sorry. Thank you. So I would love to see there are projects and funding available, recycled water projects. One was done in Palo Alto. We had a Zoom meeting about it. Sadly, staff couldn't make it. But in coordination with our biggest water users, the golf course. So there is, there's projects out there. Burlingame I know is interested, as well as Hillsborough. Hopefully, we can get on that list and take advantage of some of this. So this was through the other committee I'm on, Regional Management Resource and some other, another part of CCAG. So it's called NOAA Funding that is evidently available on St. Lynn, Maderman, and several others. Donna Colson is the chair of that committee. I do hope that staff can follow up and get a briefing on this project that happened in Palo Alto, which seemed to be very successful. So let's try to take advantage of something like that because we have these new resources and maybe additional funding as well. But the golf course would have to join us in this. But I believe Vice Mayor Colson in Burlingame, being a member there, is reaching out to them to hopefully participate with the city. So if we can note that, that would be very, very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments noted.
I don't want to steal the thunder, but I was on a call today with Director Batista. The city is participating under the National League of Cities Bootcamp for finding the grants to put together for the recycled water program, the distribution system that's also needed to get it up to the recreation. So I am just so happy that with a little nudge, the city did sign up for that. And I just happened to listen in to today's thing about the environmental process of recycled. In this case, they're looking at drinking water. There's no national program for recycled water, but we're in the drinking water connection, which we'll roll right into that. And maybe the, I don't know, city manager, maybe sometime in the fall, we have an update of where we are with the recycled water plant. And in terms of Bosca, it is on the list. And right now, what Bosca, San Francisco PUC is doing, their water programs. There are six projects. Some of them are recycled water, some of them are groundwater, some of them are...
Stormwater capture and stuff.
Kind of, but new water. Brackish water, desalination on there. And then Bosca is looking at its own projects that they would, at minimum, support with a support letter. So Millbrae could, I think, at least expect a support letter, but perhaps more than that. And I would hope that we are out the gate ahead of that. San Jose has also been working on a huge one, but is still apparently in the pilot project. I attended their tour virtually on that. So I think that that would be a great thing for us to come back with an informational update on that. And I very much appreciate that staff is taking extra time to go to bootcamp. And there are a couple of times where the mayor is supposed to be there and the city manager is supposed to be there. So it's kind of a team effort on that, and I couldn't be happier. Sam, if you wanted to add to that. I would also add, I wanted to leave this one for the Councilwoman Papen. I do hope in our conservation program that we ask, and we're supposed to have a meeting with Steve Ritchie with the SFPUC, working on that, hopefully over August when we have no council meetings. But when SFPUC, what is the right term when they're flushing their pipes here in Millbrae and the water rolls down the street? I know Councilwoman Papen has gotten comments from that. And I haven't gotten that many complaints, but let's work with SFPUC that they capture that water. I believe we capture when we flush, we capture the water or try to. You may not get every drop, but we try. And that's a message to the public, and maybe we need signage that goes up and says, "By the way, this is, I think we do have it. This is what we're doing. We are trying to capture and reuse on there." So we're sending the same message on that. And again, would love to have that meeting through MCAC with the Outdoor Hardware supplier because he wants to be a partner on that. So we have some good things that we can do for water conservation.
Thanks for your comments.
And so it can be really exciting. Angie, Councilwoman, did you have anything? Yay, we've got a second. All right, closing public comment. Any further discussion? City Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Councilmember Papen.
Yes.
Councilmember Kaylin.
Aye.
Councilmember Fung.
Aye.
Mayor Snyder.
Aye.
Agenda item number 14 passed by a vote of four to zero.
Congratulations. Next up, Agenda Item 15. We're in the home stretch, folks. Adoption of a resolution to amend the Youth Advisory Committee bylaws to increase the committee membership to nine members and one alternate. And it's an action item. City Manager.
Can we just?
Yeah, would you like a presentation or just move to?
I think we, I think we can just move if council's pleasure.
Everybody happy? I can't see Angie. I will simply then thank staff for working with both the Vice Mayor and myself when we did interviews. The city clerk was instrumental in offering suggestions of how we manage so many terrific young people who are enthused now to be on committees and how to fill positions. So again, city clerk, I am very grateful. Thank you. Very creative solution. With that, if there's a motion.
So moved.
Second.
City Clerk, could you call? I have no public comments on this. Do we have anyone on Zoom?
I do not see any public comment online.
Closing public comment, bringing it back to council. City Clerk, call the vote.
Councilmember Papen.
Yes.
Councilmember Kaylin.
Aye.
Councilmember Fung.
Aye.
Mayor Snyder.
Aye.
Agenda item number 15 passed by a vote of four to zero.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Number 16. This is consider appointments to Culture Arts Advisory Committee, Economic Vitality Advisory Committee, and Youth Advisory Committee. And I know we want to go quickly, but I think we should do the staff report because if anybody's watching from home, including our young people, they should see their names.
Certainly, Mayor. I would just like to hand it over to our city clerk, Ms. Elaine Tran, for a presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Elaine Tran, city clerk. The presentation before you is the recommendation from the council interview subcommittee and alternate. Next slide, please. For Cultural Arts Advisory Committee, this recommended that Jessica Cessina is appointed to the alternate position. And on Economic Vitality Advisory Committee, Freeman Peng was the original alternate, but he wished to be considered for a full membership. The subcommittee is recommending that he become a full member. And in the Youth Advisory Committee, now that it's expanded to nine members, there are quite a few reappointments. It is Frederick Langenstein, Tanner Young, Manju Brissette, Zareen Cheng, Madison Douglas, Kyomi St. John, Adrian Fung. And there are two new members, which is Hannah Lim and Shre Parik. Sorry, I don't know how to pronounce the last name, but I'm trying. Parik. And they are, and with this Youth Advisory Committee, there are two middle school students, and the rest are high school students. There is one open position, which is the alternate position. Next slide, please. And this is what the roster will look like for the Cultural Arts, Economic Vitality, and Youth Advisory Committee, considering pending city council approval. If council do want to approve the recommendation. Next slide. So tonight's council action is consider the appointments to Cultural Arts Advisory Committee, Economic Vitality Advisory Committee, and Youth Advisory Committee as recommended by the interview subcommittee and alternate.
So before I call on anyone, I wanted to point out, and this is where the city clerk's creativity came in. The older sister of Shre Parik could not make the interview. But it turns out, so she's a high school student, very interested in environmental programs, and had also clicked on her box that she's interested in Community Enhancement Advisory Committee. So we debated keeping the alternate for the YAC open, but to see if this young lady would be interested in serving on MCAC because now that we no longer have the requirement that you must be a registered voter, therefore 18 years of age, we could have young people on MCAC. And given that MCAC is climate change, I couldn't be happier. So I hope when the committee might interview her, she's interested. And if any young people are still awake or watching council tonight, I encourage you now, under our new guidelines, that you can serve on a couple of these committees. And we have three openings on Community Enhancement Advisory Committee, which is a horrible way of saying our environment committee. So with that, but I couldn't, again, city clerk, that was a great solution to our inability to get to interview this young woman. Counsel, comments?
I have a question. City Manager, within the charter, do we have any age minimum in order to serve on any of these committees?
I'm going to look to the city attorney to see if there is.
I don't recall any. I'm checking. There are some that have voter requirements, which is what we changed, but that would certainly include one. But let me double check. Is it a specific committee?
No, I mean, so I only bring that up because, first of all, Mayor mentioned that there might be a youth who wants to join, and I'm happy to support it. I do know that recently Redwood City has voted to change their ordinance to allow younger members to join some of their committees because I think they used to have an ordinance that says minimum 18 years of age, and then they lowered that to 16. So just before we go down that path, I just want to make sure we clear all those hurdles, if any exist.
We will look that up and get back to the city council on that.
There was a rush of kindergarteners.
I think it's a good point, but again, if this happens for MCAC, it won't happen until September.
And then if it happens, we can bring it back for discussion later.
But that candidate's 18?
I'm sorry?
Is that candidate 18 years of age?
I don't think we've ever, in my experience, ever talked about age on anything just being a voting, you know, so voting dictated age. So now with that requirement gone, it gives us that opportunity for our young people.
We'll research it and notify the council.
That would be great. Okay, with that, any, I have no public comment on this. Do we have anybody online?
We have one speaker.
Okay.
Is Ogla Garcia.
Ms. Garcia?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I'm interested in the Economic Advisory Committee. If somebody can reach out to me for the requirements for that, and mostly I'm interested in the time commitment.
Go ahead, city clerk.
Unless the, unless the interview process has been closed.
We actually accept application year-round. And if there's a vacancy, we bring that forward to the subcommittee. So I will be sharing information with you. If you want to email me, my email is etran, which is E-T-R-A-N, at ci.milbury.ca.us. And you can also go on our website under Government Commissioned Committees. There is ways to contact me there as well. And you could read more about the commissioning committees that you might be interested in.
Okay, perfect. I'm going to do that tomorrow morning. Thanks.
Thank you.
And for evac, there is that one alternate position open. So it's good timing in there. All right, do we have anyone else on public comment?
There are no other speakers online.
Thank you. Closing public comment, bringing it back to council. Oh, Councilwoman Kaylin.
I have one question, and now that I think about it, maybe it was for the last item. But with the Youth Advisory Council, with those nine slots, is it designated that two are always guaranteed for middle school? Or is it just kind of fluctuate with the applications we get over time?
Under the resolution, they're required to have two minimum high school students and two minimum middle school students.
And we did have a problem filling the middle school slot. So this is exciting to start their new year, which runs September to June, with two middle schoolers. So if there's no further comment, I'm sorry. Actually, one of them, three, two of them are Leos. And one of the middle schoolers is a Leo. If there's no further discussion, if I can have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion for Cultural Art Advisory Committee and Economic Vitality Advisory Committee.
Oh, we have to do this in two parts, don't we? Thank you. Thank you for that. Okay, so we have a motion for Cultural Arts and Economic Vitality. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Kaylin. On that, and no further discussion, if we could vote on those appointments.
Councilmember Papen.
Yes.
Councilmember Kaylin.
Aye.
Councilmember Fung.
Aye.
Mayor Snyder.
Aye. I apologize, we didn't, oh, sorry.
The council, sorry. The council approved the council commission committee interview subcommittee's recommendations to Cultural Arts Advisory Committee and Economic Vitality Advisory Committee by a vote of four to zero.
Very good. And I want to thank Councilman Fung that he will be recusing himself on the Youth Advisory Committee because a family member is there. So if I could have a motion for approval of the nine young people for Youth Advisory Committee.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Papen.
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Kaylin. Any further discussion? I have no public comments. Lips, city clerk, could you call the vote?
Councilmember Papen.
Yes.
Councilmember Kaylin.
Aye.
Councilmember Fung is recused. Mayor Snyder.
Aye.
The motion of the city council to approve the council interview commission, I mean, interview subcommittee's recommendation to Youth Advisory Committee passed by a vote of four to zero.
Nope.
Three to one with Councilmember Fung recused.
Three, zero, one, yes. Okay, on to Agenda Item Number 17. Establishment of the Legislative Council Subcommittee and appoint members. This is an action. City Manager.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. We had received a request from Councilmember Fung to place this item on the agenda. And through the, through the city council protocols, he had made that request. You, Mayor, and you agree to put this on the agenda. And so I will hand it over to Councilmember Fung for discussion.
And before we do that, I actually support Councilman Fung on this. And Councilman Fung, I wanted to give a brief update of when I was at Cal Cities, some cities who offered to help us. If you don't, do you want me to go?
No, go ahead, please.
Okay, so we brought on a lobbyist in January, and she and the firm have been working for us on a number of issues that are specific to Millbrae. That could then go regional, and it's been really good, but it's been very odd because we don't have a real process. And right now, the main push has been on artificial turf, which is something I and the city manager have been following with the help of a great many members of the community out there. So I'd long wanted this. And then I'm on a Cal City Policies Committee. I was in Pomona a few weeks ago and happened to sit next to Mina M. Laiba, who's the Legislative Affairs Manager for the City of Thousand Oaks and the mayor of Thousand Oaks, and started talking about how do we be able to be more flexible and to move as legislation moves and be able to do it in as transparent process as possible. And she talked about how they create a legislative platform and some policies with that that give staff the flexibility and council members to say why we are on this or that on any particular issue. And then Councilman Fung brought it up to me over what's been happening the last couple of weeks. I'm in full support of this as creating a new council subcommittee on it. Councilman Fung.
Thank you. And that's exactly some of the goals and motivation to establishing this legislative subcommittee, being able to work with our legislative consultants to set some strategic goals, you know, just like Mayor just said, put some process around all of this work. They've been doing some wonderful work for us, and we want to make sure that this continues so that we can also have a receiving monthly report and updates from our legislative consultants, from his or her effort from Sacramento regarding legislation that relates to Millbrae's interest, building and maintaining those working relationship with our regional legislative representatives, actively assisting all the state granting funding effort. If budget committees would be somebody we can knock their doors on, right, and to help achieve some of those Millbrae goals and priorities. Being able to work collaboratively with other agencies such as PCE, CCAG, among others, to further our interest. to further our interest in terms of our legislative priorities. Also, many different agencies have reached out to us, also requesting for support for certain legislative proposals as well. So this subcommittee can also put all of these discussions together and perhaps come up with recommendations to the council for further discussion. So I think, you know, having all of that, there is good reason to establish this legislative subcommittee. Obviously, I welcome all the discussions, and, you know, when the council is ready, I'd be more than happy to make a motion to establish this subcommittee, and I certainly would love the opportunity to serve on that subcommittee as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Pappin?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and Councilmember Fung. I'm just, I'm concerned about the amount of staff time here. We have the Council of Cities, we have CCAC, we have our lobbyists. If this group were to be established, I think, you know, making recommendations as to what the city's concerns are. Councilmember Fung and I both serve on the CCAC Legislative Committee. It really, there's a lot of time involved in what recommendations go forward here. We have, again, a lobbyist working on our behalf if we need to clarify what really impacts our city, because there's just so much legislation that's going out there, a lot of which has impacted us positively or negatively. There's no doubt about that. I just don't know what city staff may have to, you know, hours involved in staffing some of this. So, so kind of what I'm saying here is, if you decide to go down that path, I'm concerned the amount of city staff time that would be involved here. I do trust the council here, if they want to focus our paid lobbyist in a specific direction, I think that is valuable. But we're very limited as far as the city goes, and that's what my concern is here. So I guess I'm looking for a better understanding here. If it's just going to involve our city staff and two council members, I can't support it because I just think we're running too slim here. If it's two council members, you know, defining with the approval of the rest of the council what areas they want our lobbyists to focus on, I'm more comfortable with that, because again, we get recommendations, either we can have our lobbyists focus on what the Council of Cities is pursuing, more so on what CCAC is pursuing. I, I think there's, there's ways to make this workable without taking a significant amount of city time. So I guess I'm looking for further explanation. Thank you.
I'd be happy to chime in on that. I think this effort, it's about streamlining our process and to make it more efficient. Obviously, there are hundreds, if not thousands, of legislations coming up in Sacramento every year, and, you know, we need to be able to pick and choose the one that, you know, as it relates to Milbrae's interest, and be a real champion for that so that we can protect Milbrae's interest. And I think that's the goal of all of this. And I understand the concern about staff time. Obviously, we already have this consultant on board. So to that end, I think this effort here, establishing this subcommittee, would bring about the involvement of a subcommittee, two members of the council to this effort. If anything, I think it will help lessen our staff's time and involvement in this so that we can streamline this process and make it more efficient and make it more effective. And I hope that was helpful.
Not really.
Let me try then. Councilwoman, you said, not so much if it's just any legislation, but if it's more directed at our lobbyist, I will tell you, it's more directed at the lobbyist. We're paying for a lobbyist. She's on retainer. We want to make sure we're getting our value from that. When I had this lovely conversation, because we were talking about Cal Cities legislation, a lot of that, we just simply say, yes, City of Milbrae supports or not, because generally, if it's local control, well, that's a question. If it's local control, is that something that we would tend to want to support, local control language or not? But in this case, it's really helping the lobbyist and looking at those. And the way the Legislative Affairs Manager, granted, Thousand Oaks is much bigger than us, but they, she said basically what they do is every year, they kind of look at the city, what are the city's top needs within a legislative parameter, and that's what they concentrate their efforts on. And in that case, instead of any, then they get, for example, the sample letter from some other group that might be working on the same thing, they send the sample letter, we use the sample letter, we put it on our letterhead. It should, as Councilman Fung said, streamline it. It's something we've never done, so that's why this is a subcommittee. But I think also typically, it's really, you know, because you've been mayor before, sometimes the letters go out under our name, but we don't really have time to let it go to the public, and that feels like it's not as transparent as we should be. But sometimes legislation moves like that. So, but if, as long as, let's use artificial turf. Let's use Senate Bill Six Forty-Six, Six Seventy-Six. It has cleared all of its committees, but let's say it needs another support letter on that, and the turnaround time is less than 24 hours. If it's in this document saying this is what the city cares about, we can turn out that letter. So it should simplify things on that and make us more there. And I think, I don't think it would, like I brought, I'm on LAFCO now, so I read through the LAFCO assignments, the legislation, most of them, you know, they don't apply to us. A couple could because of local control, but I think this is Milbrae-specific. What are things that we might need that are different than CCAC, different than LAFCO, different than Cal Cities? Because I have been encouraging Cal Cities to do artificial turf, and they're paying attention to it, but it didn't make it up into the full list. But I will tell you, when I was down in Pomona, I had more cities come up to me saying, we want to know what you're doing about artificial turf. So I think we're going to be very narrow with our needs.
Okay, well, as the mayor just described here, something like artificial turf, we've already decided, and absolutely that would be something that, you know, benefits Milbrae. So, I mean, I don't have, you know, an issue with that at all. And as you described it, we may need to turn around a letter quickly there. So, yeah, I guess I'm just, if we're in that area, then that's fine, that's great, because we are doing the best interest of the people. And as far as your comment as to transparency, particularly if we've already discussed something, we know where the council is on that. So I don't have a problem with that. I just hope we, I guess when you, if you start out on this, that we keep that focus here. If something comes that hasn't been before the council, I guess figure out a way that you bring it before the council. That would be helpful. So I would be open to that. Definitely, I would hope that the committee would use the resources that currently exist to help you all. So if it's before the CCAC ledge, or as the mayor said, Council of Cities, or not the Council of Cities, I guess they're behind us on the turf thing. But yeah, let's try to go from there so we stay on track. So as described here with the discussion, I would support that as we go here. But I would also ask that if we set up this committee, the committee comes back and lets us know kind of the direction they're heading in. That would be helpful. So I can do that.
Yeah, so I think, just like any other council subcommittee, you know, it's a recommendation to the full council. So obviously, the council will have the final say, and it's just, it's, that's always been the case, and then we will make sure that this subcommittee perform the same way.
Can we, though, I'm concerned about what the mayor said here, because some, certain legislation goes very quickly here. So if, as I'm viewing your, this subcommittee, we know where we are on the artificial turf. So going right to, you know, notifying the rest of the council, we're going, asking our lobbyists, get out there and do this, I think that's all we need on something like that, because again, it's already been here. I would like, not like to hold that up, because time is, you know, action here. So you kind of get where I'm going on that?
It's also further complicated that we take August off on recess, which is when everything starts going crazy. So if we had, let's say, let's start small, three things next year. So because this is legislation, so we're talking about calendar year 2024, we want, for example, how some cities are really good at getting regional money. Let's say we're really looking for regional money for the sewage treatment plant for tertiary water, recycled human potable water on that, and that's one of our top goals. We can move on it. And then also, I, I think, I think I've seen it, I've seen it work with my Sierra Club hat on, that as long as we stick to policy, we can produce those supports or oppose. Oppose, because we, you know, a bill can be something we adore, and overnight, it can be something we're going to have to turn out a, no, we don't like this anymore.
Absolutely, absolutely.
On that. So it's just giving that flexibility.
Well, I think we have a little time, I think the legislature's going on break briefly, but, okay, I, I can live with what you're describing.
And I think that the membership of this, of the subcommittee, should it continue, will change. I think likely it will always have the mayor, because the mayor signs the letters on that. So whatever our issues are, it might go to that council person who has the most knowledge or interest or time on that.
Well, we have two interested parties, I guess.
I mean, a good example, if I may, a good example, and I think that this will lend itself when we do our annual goal setting and get into our strategic planning, because, for example, I've been getting a lot of communication on SB 58, and that's something that, you know, if there's action to be taken, and, and that's the Scott Wiener bill on the, on the legalization of illegal drugs. And I don't want to get into it, but I'm just using that as an example of how fast we would need to act. But if that is on a legislative platform during our annual goal setting and annual direction, that would be extremely helpful. And I'm just using that because that's a very current one, how fast sometimes we need to react, you know, or not.
Our public has spoken on issues like that.
Yeah, and I don't want to get into that, I'm just using as example that I, I actually think this is good to get us rowing in the same direction, being on the same page, especially when it comes to our goals, and then we align with CCAC, Cal Cities, State of California, and where they're headed, or do what we did on artificial turf and, and take our own lead and introduce things.
Just while, before, Councilwoman Pappin, you know, all, all five of us met with the lobbyist back in, like, from January through March, I think it took a while. Each one of us had an idea of what we thought the city should concentrate on. That never came back. So I think one of the first tasks of the subcommittee is to look at that data. I mean, each year changes, but I, I keep thinking how some cities are so good at getting the money, and we're grateful for then Assemblyman, now Congressman Mullins' $2 million, or Assemblywoman Pappin, Senator Becker's $300,000 for the parks on the east side.
Don't forget the Congresswoman.
But what if we got better at saying, we need $10 million for XYZ, and we've got it right at the beginning, and the lobbyist goes to town on it?
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say that I echo a lot of the comments that Councilmember Pappin mentioned. I'd love to see, and I think this goes along with what our subcommittees usually do, but also, you know, just like any legislative organization or advocacy organization, we see the high volume of our legislation come out around the same time in the legislative cycle, looking ahead and making that annual plan, and then having the subcommittee monitoring that and, and bringing back any actions that happen in between, and really getting those updates. And in the bigger picture, long-term, but hopefully not too long-term, I would love to see the city have a strategic plan, and then there's a strategic initiative that's always our advocacy, and the subcommittee can help guide and make those recommendations for the council to vote on.
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely is the intent of it.
Councilwoman Pappin?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So the $300,000 was from Assemblymember Pappin, not to say.
Thank you, Assemblywoman Pappin. I'm happily correct.
Uh, yes, but, so I would like to see this group as well. I discussed this with the mayor and the city manager here, that advocacy needs to be done locally as well. So every single time we talk about housing, we talk about how none of the housing organizations have supported us on our approved project at the, called the MUSE project. And I would like to see us send out a letter to all these groups and to our legislative members and the board of supervisors that Milbrae has an approved project involving, how many housing units now?
Four hundred and eighty-eight, fifteen percent low, low affordable.
Thank you. All of which should be in a one-page letter that we, you know, this project is approved, ready to go. High speed rail has an alternative, that high speed rail can still operate in Milbrae, but we need your support on this approved project. So we need to start getting other jurisdictions, other organizations supporting us. So I would like to see this group pursuing that. And as I mentioned earlier, this group sending a letter to BART, put your fair gates up sooner, that kind of thing, because these are all to benefit our residents, our city, and we haven't done that. And we, when we do do it, like we got $600,000 to study the station, we brought in letters from even high-speed rail. So if we could do that, I think that really ups our game.
I think it's a great idea.
So I, I think that would work, and then other letters might come up. So that would be very, very helpful to strengthening Milbrae's position, and rightfully so. So if this subcommittee can, you know, take the lead and make sure we get those correspondents out, and just things that support our jurisdiction here, because we, as has been clearly stated, we don't get a lot of support from different groups, and we need to really call, call that out, say, be a part of this. So.
I, I think that's a great idea. For Councilwoman Cahalan, who's new, the, when you become mayor, a lot of these letters come out as the mayor as opposed to city council, because they have to go out in a timeframe, and they can't get agendized, the two weeks and all of that. And that always bothered me, because to me, it's more power when it's the five of us together. And I think that's something we can explore. How can a letter come from all of us, or does it always have to come to a council meeting? And then we just learn to set our, our council agendas up to make sure we've got time. I think of San Carlos Mayor Adam Rack, who really took the lead, I don't want to steal it from anybody else, on Brown Act and letting us continue to have some kind of Zoom, and how well he managed that program, and how we wanted to help him. And I think that came through Council of Cities on that. So, you know, different avenues, but that's a good example to look at how the Brown Act legislation worked. With that, do we have any?
Yes, speaking of the Brown Act legislation, I was just, since I'm also on the Peninsula Clean Energy Legislative Subcommittee as well, and I went up to Sacramento just to lobby for the SB 537, had the opportunity to work with their consultant in Sacramento and appear in front of the local government committee to ensure that bill gets out, that subcommittee.
You want, you want to say what that bill is?
Say again?
You just said 537. How many people know what that is?
Oh, it's the Brown Act bill to allow amendment, the Brown Act bill from Senator Becker's, that allows for video conferencing to continue for multi-jurisdictional JPAs. And so, so that's sort of how effective these, these efforts can be, and how beneficial that would be, and important it is for some of those legislative subcommittee to be effective for the jurisdiction that it serves.
I'd like to note, too, the Assemblymember Pappin also has one of those bills, so let's keep in mind what both of our representatives are doing.
Well, it, it's slightly off-topic, but in the LAFCO are three Brown Act bills, one of them's Assemblywoman Pappin, but I thought it got turned into a two-year bill.
I don't even know, but I'm just saying.
I thought it got turned into, a couple of really good ones got turned into two-years.
We want all those bills to happen, because I've been in several committees that didn't have a quorum, and it just, it's really tragic.
Oh, and the participation on the regional committees, when you can zoom in, are so much greater on that, including emergency services.
In other words, support all of them.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
All right. Thank you. We have a mo, do you want to make?
Yes, I'd gladly make the motion that we establish a subcommittee, that the mayor and Councilmember Fung serve on this subcommittee, that the subcommittee works closely with our lobbyists, that the subcommittee specifically include two letters which we just mentioned, and also report back to us as to what sort of procedure you'd like going forward here. We did clearly state that many of the issues we have have already come before the council, but there may be more coming forward here, that we but there may be more coming forward here that we, we specifically, the artificial turf, that, so go with that one joyfully, but, and the Brown Act, those kind of things, those are all clearly established here. So I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cahalan. Any public comment? Seeing none, I have no speaker slips, closing public comment, bringing it back to council for the comment. City Clerk, could you call the vote?
Councilmember Papen?
Yes.
Councilmember Cahalan?
Aye.
Councilmember Fung?
Aye.
Mayor Snyder?
Aye.
The city council established the legislative council ad hoc subcommittee and appoint Mayor Snyder and Councilmember Fung to serve on the subcommittee to work closely with the city's lobbyists and report back to the full council. Motion passed by four to zero.
Thank you, City Clerk. Okay, it is 10:51, we are not going to extend the meeting. I have one thing I want to bring up, but council, do you want to try to do some council comments really quickly?
Yeah.
All right, but let me start this off so we don't run out of town. To the people of Millbrae, many of you received an anonymous letter. My household received an anonymous letter, and then several other anonymous letters on that. To that extent, the city attorney, in this case Joan Casman, and myself looked at the letters and created a response letter. Part of the problem with the anonymous letter is it implies that it came from city council when it did not. So I have had that letter, and it was officially sent out to the people who had reached out to me. So that was July 17th. I have been replying to people's phone calls, and I'm still replying to people's phone calls. I will tell you that the, I would love to read from the letter, but I'm thinking now, given that this has come up under public comments, that we need to send it out using our own media programs on that. The letter is full of falsehoods. It is very sad that it involves, we, we know it comes. We know that it is related to something that has been in litigation, that has been in closed session, making it very uncomfortable to talk about it, because we're still trying to work things out and thought we had. But there are absolute lies in that letter. We are not $20 million down. There has not been any problems, and we are working on additional information that shows in newspapers, officially documented, that the city manager was cleared of all wrongdoing in Milpitas. And to the public, if you would like to, if you want one-on-one, I'm happy to talk and speak with you one-on-one on this. This is a time when the people of Millbrae need to be together, to work together. We've got a lot of work ahead of us on that, and this letter makes me so very, very sad. And please come to me, please come to your council on this. And I would say, when you get something that's anonymous and it looks questionable, question it. Thank you. Councilwoman Papen.
Thank you for addressing that, Madam Mayor. I would at least suggest, not that we send out something and bring more attention to something that's not there, but, yes, I would suggest we do post it on the city's website. Mayor addresses anonymous letter, so that if people are looking for that, they can find that. Because I don't want to see us spending money, the more time you spend addressing something, the more attention you bring to it. So that would be my recommendation.
Thank you.
So if I might, senior advisory committee met, and the lines of the age-friendly, they are doing a survey of their population related to transportation, what people would like, what they need, that kind of thing. So they are working on that. Senior lunches, everything is going wonderfully so. The committee's great, but we did not have a quorum this last time. So that's not any fun. Real quick, if I may, Councilmember Cahalan and I met this morning with the subcommittee regarding fields. The deadline is, what day?
August.
The fif, is it August? September, it's September. So we are still in negotiations. We are hopeful, both groups, our job is to serve the public, and so that's what.
Just a question on that. City manager, the deadline for the field negotiation, is it August or September?
September.
It is September.
Okay, good.
September, middle of September 15th.
Okay, so we don't have to have a special closed session or anything?
No, 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 no. We, the city has presented their proposal. We are expecting something back from the school district's proposal. The school district will likely have a special meeting. We're good, we're, again, we do, we all have common goals here, and so that's what we are working towards, and I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Anyone else? We have, I've already talked about Bosque, BPAC, my last time as chair will be this coming Thursday. Council of Cities Dinner, first August, is up early, it's August 11th, if you saw that, to let the city clerk know. This Friday is the Council of Cities Dinner in East Palo Alto, and I hope some of us are going. It's an absolutely amazing facility out on the coast side there. And with that, I will close. Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Just one quick one, I just want to thank the staff for the opening of our new water tank up on Skyline, ensuring that we have clean and reliable drinking water delivered to every single one of the 23,000 of us in our city for decades to come, and project being done on time, on budget, and keeping all of our drinking water supply safe. So I wanted to thank the staff for this wonderful work. Thank you so much.
And actually, I would, I forgot that, and I want to thank city clerk, city manager Williams, and Eduardo, and Jason Yi. Some young people approached me months ago, I confused them with another young group. They wanted to do a youth and government, high school students teaching middle school students, cobbled it together, they had the program two weeks ago, it was here in council chambers. It turns out, one of them is a YAC member, which I hadn't made that connection. Zareen is, is one of the principals for that. The program worked really well. I want to thank both the sheriff's department, who gave us a tour, the kids love the jail, of course. I hadn't seen the jail, so that was something new, and the fire department gave a really fantastic tour of Station 37. And I want to thank the Lions, who covered the cost of the room rental, so the Lions paid $800 for the room rental for that. So a program on that, and what the, the young people would like to do is to work with, and Hannah already knows this, work with the recreation department to bring this back as an annual program, probably not in the summertime, or maybe, but do the advertising in January, so they've got booked mid, the target is middle school students on that. So it was a lovely program, but it was a lot of extra work for staff that none of us anticipated, but thank you to everyone.
Two quick things. Caltrain's first electric train is going to be tested this weekend, Saturday, in San Jose. I don't know how far they're going to run it, but that should be interesting. And I don't know if I covered this once before, but I lost a neighbor, Joan Micaletti passed away, and I forgot if we did that in the last meeting, so if we can.
I saw, I saw her obituary.
Okay, if we could close in honor of Joan Micaletti, longtime, I think so, yes.
Yeah.
Longtime Millbrae resident, really caretaker to many of the stray pets around, too, so I would appreciate if we could close in her honor.
Thank you, and we will do so.
Her son lives in Millbrae as well.
City Clerk, I have her obituary in my stack, so I will get that for you on that. So with that, and we are one minute before 11 o'clock. Thank you all. To the people of Millbrae, your city council has recessed. As a former staffer, you know what that means? That they don't have to produce packets for us, and they can get a lot of work done right now, so that, because we are not bothering them and asking questions. And now city clerk can hold me accountable for that. With that, I thank you very much. Everyone have a lovely August. We have activities out the yin yang in August, finishing with the Art and Wine Festival on Labor Day weekend, and then the Mid-Autumn Festival. I think that happens right after we come back from our recess with that. Thank you all, thank you, staff, and have a lovely August. And we are closing exactly at 11:00 PM.
Recording stopped.